So we'll call them, is, are we recording?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll call the meeting to order at uh six thirty two.
No, not too bad.
So, and I'll call for reorganization of the select board and um and a motion or a, yeah, motion to elect a new chairman.
Sure.
Uh, I will nominate Peg.
I will second.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Then we'll take a vote. All in favor of electing Peg as uh the new chair. Say aye.
Aye.
Should I abstain?
No.
Is that rude?
You can vote.
Okay, aye.
Okay.
We're kind of hoping you don't vote again. That's what the only thing.
Ah, okay. And um.
And I would like to make a nomination to um have Scott Hawkins as our vice chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, um. Thank you. See, you were late and I'm like mindless. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay.
Uh, I will make the wish to for Chris Keith to be part.
I second the motion.
Okay.
All opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, I was aye.
No.
I was, I was in favor. Okay.
Sometimes you forget to vote.
Just go easy when you have conditions to follow.
Alright. Alright, the agenda is busy, so let us roll. Alright, uh, on the approval of minutes. The one's missing.
I will make the motion that we approve the April twenty fifth and May sixth open session minutes.
Are those the ones?
Yes, those are the ones in the folder.
And we'll defer the other one.
Uh, any questions on either of those?
Nope. I'll second that.
Excellent. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And uh, we will move the twenty ninth to our June meeting, correct?
Mm-hmm.
June third. Um, I know the general public comment is number three on the list, but I kind of have a feeling that there might be some discussion later under new business. So what is your pleasure to maybe move public comment?
That's fine. And maybe we will answer the questions.
Yeah.
With the conversation that we have.
Correct. And if we can't then.
Yeah, take it up right before seven, right before eight on the agenda.
Okay. Alright, awesome. Thank you. Alright. Uh, so our first hearing is at six thirty. Uh, there's a FY twenty three audit presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, we did complete our FY twenty three audit, and if you can bring forward Chad Clark with, oh, perfect, there's Chad. Hi Chad, how are you?
Hello, everyone.
Ooh, we can hear him clearly even.
Wonderful. Thank you for joining us this evening. Um, Chad is here uh with Roselli Clark Associates. They did our audit this year as well. I think last year, Chad, is that correct? This is the second year?
We did. Last year was our first year.
Okay, wonderful. And um, he is here to give an overview of the audit and um some of the observations and recommendations.
Alright, so give me half a second here. We're gonna share the PowerPoint screen. Look good to you all?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright.
Alright.
So, um. I click into the next one. Alright. So, uh, I'm Chad Clark. I was the partner on the job this year. I believe uh you all might have met with my partner, uh, Tony Roselli last year. Um, no particular reason for uh the switch other than uh just the timing uh of the audit this year. Um, it worked better for uh me to take it on. So, uh, I get to meet everyone there this year. Uh, then next headings of the different headings of the slides we're gonna go through, there's an introduction, uh governmental funds reported, economic trends, long-term obligations, informational items, ARPA findings and recommendations, and then uh at the end, uh more than willing to take any questions you have. And quite honestly, it, some of this stuff kind of gets into the moment. Um, so I certainly don't have any problem if any of you want to stop me and ask for clarification as I'm going through it. Um, so, let me see here. So, real quickly, uh, what is the audit we're doing? We're doing a financial statement audit for the fiscal year twenty three. Uh, that involves us looking at um the uh balances uh within assets, liabilities, and fund balances, things such as va- validating and verifying the cash balances, receivables, uh, your liabilities, payables, debt, um, and then also uh validating the uh fund balance. For each of the different uh funds. Uh, part of our audit requires us to gain an understanding and documentation of the internal controls over major transactions. Uh, we're, we're obviously uh common sense supposed to uh understand how a bill gets paid, understand, you know, how receipts taken in, understand how payroll's done. Um, and then the third one uh requires risk assessment and enhanced procedures and identifying material areas. Uh, this is primarily just taking a look at what's going on in the town for the year and focusing uh our, our efforts uh to ensure that we're, we're adequately covering um those areas. One of the ones um that I think is no surprise uh to you is we spent a little more time on cash this year. Um, so, um, in fact, I, I came in special one day to um uh to kind of go through it and, and, and see where things were at. So some of what comes after here is uh some of the thoughts I had in going through it. Uh, single audit under uniform guidance qualifying limits. Single audits you may be hearing about, uh, those are the federal grant audits. Uh, the town did not require one this year. I don't, historically, it hasn't. A lot of towns that have it in the past did qualify over the last couple of years and maybe for the next couple because of the CARES money from COVID and the ARPA funds. Uh, we can talk about it, but um at the moment, uh, you don't receive a lot of normal recurring federal grant funds. Uh, the ARPA funds has around eight hundred thousand or so left, hi- high hundreds left in it. Uh, to qualify for a single audit, you have to expend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more in, in a single fiscal year of, of federal grant funds. So I'm not sure that's gonna happen, uh, but we are gonna touch on some of this just uh for planning, for just in case purposes. Uh, clean opinion versus qualified opinion, the town did receive a clean opinion. Uh, we didn't have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And then communication with governing body letter, uh, that's a, that's a letter we're, we're required to provide now, and it is taken the place of what was traditionally, uh, maybe you had, you received and was referred to as a management letter. Right, so one of the things I just want to talk about is when you look through the financial statements, you're gonna see that there's these different funds, and I just wanted to touch base on, make sure everyone knew what they were. Your general fund is your general fund, pretty much exactly as DOR refers to it. Um, it's where your, you know, taxation money, your departmental uh budgeted money all goes through there. The one difference uh primarily is that in the case of the audit financial statements, your stabilization funds go into the general fund. That's something that's different than how the town keeps their books. The ARPA fund is a standalone fund that just shows the status of the ARPA monies, what's come, what's come in, what's gone out for the year. Uh, you will see that uh the ARPA fund has no fund balance, but does have cash because as it being a grant fund, uh, it is, the money that you haven't spent yet that you've received is viewed as unearned, which is a liability in where you'll see it. Community preservation fund, that's exactly what the town maintains as, as the CPA fund. Uh, ambulance fund is for ambulance services, conservation fund. Um, we break out, uh, obviously it's for the different uh various conservation monies that the town has set aside and allocated for such projects. Those funds, ARPA, community preservation, ambulance, conservation are all separate because they're required to be under um the GASB rules for uh significant transactions, um, which is why they're determined to break at, being broken out in case anyone's curious. The non-major governmental funds is pretty much a catch-all for everything else. It's all use, uh, it's all other special revenue funds, capital project funds, and trust funds. Any questions?
Nope.
Nope, it's pretty good.
Alright, so this is a nice little chart I put together. Uh, this is your general fund unassigned balance, which is also known as a reserve balance for the general fund. Uh, this is pretty much your starting point for free cash, and then DOR makes some adjustments uh going throughout. As you can see, the um, you know, fourteen, ten years ago, you had a little higher number, and then it pitched off in fifteen. But ever since then, um, you've pretty much been stepping up some every year. And the dollar amounts, just to put it into perspective, in two thousand twenty-three, you were at five point nine million as reflected on this chart, and in twenty-two, you were at just under five point five million. So you grew nearly half a million dollars in your reserve balance in the general fund uh in FY twenty-three. And I'll, I'll get in a little later on wh- what caused that.
And Chad, the five point nine million, that includes sort of all, I mean, you said the word free cash, but that's also all the stabilization funds as well. So it's not just what we consider free cash, but it's also capital stabilization and regular stabilization and public safety state. I don't know, we have several stabilization funds.
You got five of them now, yeah. Yeah, yes, you're correct. Um, yeah, that's the only.
We're told there was uh two something or all in, in free cash, and so I just wanted to make sure that's the difference between the we said was town meeting and the number he's showing.
Yes, no, good point. As I said, you, your normal ge- general unassigned without stabilization is the starting point, and then yes, the, you've got, uh, but DOR does not include stabilization in that. That is correct. Uh, just a, a nice little ratio that popped up here because of that, especially because of that bump up that I wanted to share with you is the town is at, um, see here, flip past the thing. The town is at forty-one point two percent as a reserve ratio. What that means is if you take the undesignated number or that reserve balance, and you divide it by your total general fund expenditures in FY twenty-three, that balance would cover forty-one percent of your operations for one year, all things being equal. So this is in, that's an extremely healthy ratio right there. As you can see, the tier one metric is fifteen percent. And that's kind of the target goal to uh have a strong and healthy number. The state average is at ten percent. So, you know, that might have gone up with everybody going up a little bit. It's probably about a year delayed because we don't have everybody's immediate undesignedated, but it's, it's right in that ballpark. And then the low metric is just kind of where you don't want to be, which is uh four percent um, or less.
Chad, I just wanted to add though that that doesn't take into account um funds that are um reserved for specific purposes like CPA or the public safety stabilization, which can't, can only be used for specific reasons, correct?
Uh, no, that includes all stabilization. Um, there is there, there is technically under the law, no restriction, even though you earmarks stabilization. Um, the town meeting could vote to use those stabilization funds any way they want, and as long as you get the two-thirds vote. Um, so that's why we, we put it into undesignedated because the um, for planning purposes and everything, I totally get it, but under the letter of the law, you could repurpose any of those stabilizations with a vote at town meeting. So if for some reason the economy went bad and you needed that money to pay for operations, um, if you put the vote to town meeting and they approved, you could use it as necessary. But it doesn't include things like articles that you're carrying over or encumbrances in the general fund. Um, and you are correct, none of the money like CPA or anything like that, none of that money is in there. That is really just general fund and stabilization. All set?
Yep.
Okay. Trends. So financial trends uh in the general fund, revenues beat the budget forecast by finer, five hundred and seventy-five thousand. Expenditures beat budget by seven hundred and sixty-one thousand. Uh, and then your general fund undesignedated increased four hundred and sixty-two thousand. Well, what does that mean? Uh, how, how do we get to the four sixty-two? It, it actually ended up playing out real simply. Um, you ended up utilizing about seven hundred and fifty thousand of free cash in FY twenty-three for different projects. So you basically replaced uh what you use for free cash in FY twenty-three with what you saved in the general, in expenditures um coming in under budget. And then your increase in reserve was pretty much funded by the uh, the surplus revenues you received above budget. As noted before, uh, the, the metric, S and P suggests a fifteen percent. You were at forty-one. Metrics are above the state averages, and then the town continues to maintain uh a bond rating with Moody's of double A three, which is in the high-grade bond rating category. And it's three steps away from triple A. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Going on here, here's, here's your stabilization fund. So he, here's your various different stabilization funds and their balances at the end of June. One of the things I want to point out, uh, the, happened here recently, the uh opioid money. DOR came out with guidelines on how to handle this, and they want it in a special revenue fund. Um, not a stabilization. When you guys put it and voted it into stabilization fund at the time, that was probably about your only option. I'm guessing that was before the, the DOR clarified things under the uh next round of modernization uh legislation. The good news is, is that DOR is trying to make this easy for everyone, and you can basically just cancel out the stabilization fund and move that money into an opioid special revenue fund um without any further votes or anything. You can just put it where it's supposed to be. But given that is the new guidance, that is probably something that uh the town should look to be doing. Your DOR free cash was certified at the end of this past June at one point seven eight million. And uh property taxation excess capacity uh above and beyond prop two and a half that hasn't been utilized is another one point eight seven million. So you, you, you have some money um that you can um you know, adapt to any economic downfalls because.
Chad, if, if I could just clarify, that one, you know, is not sitting around. That's one point eight seven that we could legally take from the taxpayers. But that's not money we have sitting around.
Correct. That is money that you forewent taxing. That is money you did not tax the taxpayer. Yeah.
And is that typical of towns? Uh, or are we an outlier?
Uh, towns keep a little bit of capacity for a town your size. That's a pretty big number.
And would there be a downside uh to our bond rating at all if we somehow did an underwrite and reduced that amount from one point eight seven to something lower?
Um.
I was thinking.
An underwrite? If. Oh, well.
One of the arguments was made against an underwrite earlier uh, uh, years ago, was that it would have an impact to our bond rating negatively.
Well, S and P and Moody's look at what you have for capacity um to generate additional funds to keep yourself moving forward i- in a healthy position. Uh, reducing that ability i- would not be something that I would expect them to favorably look upon. I don't think they look upon it negatively that you maintain that balance. Um, i- if anything, the fact that you have so much is probably a positive. It would be my uh, would be my take on it, because they're looking for things, as I said, they're looking for aspects of if we had an economic downturn, what money does the town have, or what resources does the town have to um keep things going? And uh with free cash and with this, uh, it shows a, a, a certain amount of health. If you, if you did an underwrite, you're right. If, assuming you did an underwrite and you didn't lower the budget appropriations, um, you would automatically be tapping into this excess capacity to keep everything in balance.
I would also maintain that, you know, during an economic downturn, the last thing we'd want to do is increase property taxes by ten percent because we have the capacity.
Correct. Not saying that should be the option, just um, it, it always is one. And, and as I said, what I would, you know, in all fairness, um, you know, you had to have a half a million dollar surplus in the general fund that obviously generates the idea that um the right, there's an argument to be said that the right play here was for you to let the excess capacity remain that high because you could have taxed it, but then it would have just generated more surplus. Now, there's an argument that goes both ways. Um, why, why tax more than we need? However, every year that goes by that you don't utilize any of that money while the, that base amount never goes away, you lose, like, let's say you wanted to use half a million of that. Um, you're never gonna lose the ability to get that half a million into the future, but you lost the half a million for two thousand twenty-three. What some towns do is they'll, they'll tax it, and then they'll put it in stabilization. Um, if they think that there's something, like if you had a large capital project coming in the future or something, one way of smoothing it out might be to say, well, we're gonna tap into this excess capacity a little bit, and we're gonna take the money, and we're gonna put it into stabilization. Uh, you know, a good argument is, is because with interest rate, interest rates for municipal debt have almost doubled. And it's actually impacting some communities' ability or, or how much they want to actually put towards a capital project right now. So had you, if you planned a few years in ahead and you put money into stabilization, that would be money that you could self-finance a- and avoid the interest i- is, is an argument out there, but it can go either way.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep. Uh, the pension on the long-term liabilities, you have an unfunded pension liability of seven point six million. Uh, the unfunded liability increased quite significantly to one point three eight million over the prior year. We saw this everywhere in Massachusetts for FY twenty-three, and what that was, the uh, the investment market at the end, I believe of, no, at the beginning of two thousand twenty-two collapsed. And that actually didn't, um, the pension system is on a calendar year and not a fiscal year. So that ended up being a delayed impact on the towns. Uh, because the, the loss of the investment income wasn't reported until December of two thousand twenty-two, you know, um, and it kind of got picked up finally in FY twenty-three a- as a lost, as lost investment money. Uh, it did recover some the next year, um, is, is what we're seeing. Uh, however, you know, I, I don't like to speculate on, on where investments are going or anything, especially at this particular time uh in the economic world. But this time, at the end of FY twenty-three, uh, you were forty-eight percent funded, so you're about fifty percent funded of your pension liability. Uh, debt, you're in a pretty strong position. You only have about three million outstanding. You had no additions. Uh, the principal decreased as they anticipated by a hundred and ninety thousand, and presently, the long-term debt will be fully paid off in fiscal year two thousand thirty-nine.
Chad, this is Peg. Do you have many more slides? Because I know we only allotted you about thirty minutes, and we're coming close to that thirty-minute time limit.
You know what? I'll go through some stuff real quick. Um, uh, just some investment income. Now, I'll, the network security, we're just reminding everybody, there's a lot of municipalities that are being hit with ransomware. Um, don't take it for granted that uh you gotta keep all those controls up. Uh, the key challenge is primarily, it really fell under inflation and costs, uh, the cost to build buildings, the cost to employ personnel, as I'm sure you're all well aware, went up significantly. Um, so that's trying to balance a budget with all that is a challenge. The one thing I want to be real clear about your ARPA funds, um, you, you were awarded nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand as of June thirtieth of twenty-three, you'd only spent seventy-five thousand. You only have until this December to obligate the funds, and then you have two years to pay it out. The one thing we're making sure our clients know is obligate is not the selectmen earmarking the money. Obligate is you must have a contract in place with vendors or the goods ordered um by this December. If you don't, it is gonna be subject to the money being returned to the Fed unused. Um, there are some payroll options that exist, but there are limits and hurdles to that that make it a little tricky. We're not really encouraging people to do it. Um, but, but if necessary, in some cases, you can. Um, cash management reconciliation. Uh, so we came in and looked at cash. The bottom line is the bottom part. After every, you, you hired some consultants, you got a new treasurer in, we went through everything. When all was said and done, the town's ca- treasurer's cash balance and the town's general ledger in the accountant's office was only at a difference of thirty-six hundred. And quite honestly, that's not that bad compared to what's going on out there. So there was a lot of work that had to be done. Um, like the outstanding checklist thing had to be recreated for June of twenty-three because there wasn't one on file. Some of the bank statements, they couldn't find anywhere um for June. Um, so they had to be reprinted. Um, there were multiple payroll withholding checks that were due to the pension and insurance companies that the new treasurer found in various different locations in that office that had not been timely sent. She ended up having to avoid all the checks because they were so old and reissue new ones. And then the treasurer did not inherit what they viewed was a usable cashbook file or formatted schedule. So they are in the pro, they should now be at this point, uh, re- starting with their own, uh, with the help, I think, of the consultant that was in. Um, some other things I just want to point out, financial operations. Uh, we noted that there was not a lockbox. Uh, and a lockbox is when you mail the checks for tax payments to the post office, but it actually goes to a bank. The bank scans everything, deposits everything, and gives you a file to upload. Saves a lot of time in town hall. And um, I know there's some personnel and staffing issues going on in that office and recreating. My understanding is the new treasurer has started the process of hopefully obtaining a lockbox going forward. We strongly recommend it. Plus, all that money, if it's not going over the counter, it's not subject to anything happening fraudulently in town hall with it, not to accuse anyone of it, but if it's never in town hall, it's uh much less at risk. Um, uh, we suggested potentially the town looking at moving from a semi-annual billing to a quarterly billing uh like a majority of Massachusetts towns. This is to kind of smooth out the cash flow. Um, there are certain times of the year where the town gets a little low on funds because you only bring in most of your money in, in two large lumps. Um, we noted that the accountant was entering departmental turnovers into the financial software. Uh, that should have been the treasurer's job. Uh, my understanding is the accountant started doing it because they got tired of waiting. Um, but this has reverted back into the treasurer's office in twenty-four, so I view that as corrected until anyone says otherwise. And then under the concept of uh work, uh lack of resources internally, personnel, one thing that a lot of communities are looking into is getting away from weekly payroll and going to bi-weekly. That reduces your warrants to half. So instead of somebody running fifty-two payrolls, they're running twenty-six. It can certainly free up a lot of time. It can allow. It can certainly free up a lot of time. It can allow. The people doing payroll to maybe tackle some of the HR tasks. Um, which as there is no technically no official HR department in town, uh, that is becoming more burdensome. Um, so that could help the process. I do understand this concern by employees, but ultimately, they are all paid the same amount. Um, it's just a matter of adapting to the timing of a check or a paycheck every two weeks instead of every one. And the final slot.
Okay, I was gonna say we're just about in time. I didn't know if you could start to wrap it up, please.
Yeah, no, this is actually the last one. Um, modernization of systems and processes and. The point being, uh, lack of available and qualified human resources are causing all employers to look at modernization and technology to help fill the gap. Um, there can be resistance to change. Um, to relative to technology or core processes, however, technology and the world's reliance on it, it's not going anywhere. And avoiding it is not causing anything to improve. And I would encourage that the technology should never be thought of as the solution to an operational improvement or enhancement. As you must always have qualified people running the systems, but it can be a useful new tool such as like a lockbox. To achieve the same production, but with less time spent. And I'm. Done.
Awesome. Um, any questions by the board?
Um, I just, there's a bunch of recommendations up there. I know some of them are already underway. If we just made that list or an agenda item at some point soon and. Quick, some of them I think are like, yep, six weeks from now, but then others are, I think, take more of our input.
Chris?
I, he probably covered my question.
Awesome.
Yeah. That things I'll bring up later.
Well, Chad, thank you so much. Presentation, I'm sure as we have questions like we often do, uh, we'll have Kristen get back in touch with you.
Yes, no, we're always here for you guys, so thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chad.
Have a good night.
You as well.
All right, uh, moving down, we're just a smidge late, four minutes late for a public hearing. On the all pouring liquor and common victular licenses for West Street Tavern, two sixty-three West Street. So, the beginning of the public notice hearing. Uh, Hospitality Corp, DBA, doing business as. West Street Tavern, two sixty-three West Street, Berlin, Mass, oh and five oh three, has applied. To the Berlin Select Board for an on-premise all alcohol liquor license, Matthew Rosadini.
Yes.
Manager. Uh, this license will be exercised at two sixty-three West Street in Berlin, Mass on the following described premises. A one-story building containing approximately two thousand three hundred thirty-two square feet consisting of a kitchen, bar area. And dining room with two means of ingress and egress. A public hearing will be held before the Board of Selectmen regarding this matter on Monday. Uh, Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, uh, at seven P M. Uh, town offices, second floor, room two twenty-seven, twenty-third Linda Street, Berlin, Mass via Zoom. Written and oral comments is, uh, comments from the public will be accepted before and or during this hearing. The hearing is now open. All right. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Absolutely. Uh, do you wanna give us like a brief overview?
Synopsis, sure. Uh, we are looking to open up, uh, two sixty-three West Street. Uh, as the West Street Tavern, uh, we're looking to be a, uh. Family-friendly restaurant um for the town. Uh, that serves alcohol, um, has some entertainment, uh, where where uh menu. Menu Ford or food Ford, uh, establishment. And we're very excited about it.
I noticed that on the feedback that there was a running theme that. Um, renovation is still ongoing and that everything must be passed prior to.
Yeah, we are looking to open, uh, in September, uh, probably mid-September. That's our goal. And we're we're slowly getting there, moving along.
Small steps.
Yeah, small steps, you know?
So we would be asking for the um, uh. Wow, uh, let me try that again. The license issuance to be contingent upon receiving. All department approvals and permits as well as all documentation required, but. Because it's an alcohol license, that can be a sixty to ninety day process with the state, so it makes sense to come in at this time.
Great.
And make that application.
Questions from the board?
No, I'm excited. I I'd make that motion.
I have questions.
Okay, you can ask questions.
Sure.
Parking has always been a concern where if you're going up. Randall? Yeah, is that Randall? That the houses, so if you're going up Randall, I have to do this. You're going up Randall.
Sure.
Houses are on this side. People are complaining that they're, yes, on the left, that they're parking. On their grass, that they put cones out, people move the cones, they park them. So what are you doing to potentially mitigate? Um, issues by neighbors?
Um, I I haven't, I didn't know of those issues with people parking on that side. I mean, it was what, six years ago when it was last.
Agreed.
Busy and open. Um, I do recall people did park on the right side. Uh, going up the hill. That's, you know, what I would do, whatever is needed to deter and and. Make sure that the neighbors are happy about anyone parking there.
Awesome. I've heard from one particular neighbor that. She would love to have you meet.
Sure, absolutely.
Stop and talk to them.
Yeah, yeah, we we plan on doing something.
It goes a long way.
Yeah, we plan on doing something with the neighborhood as we get closer and.
Good.
Have them in and show them around and.
Yeah.
Maybe show them the food.
Yeah, there you go.
Right. Plus two, there would be a public safety concern if you have cars parked here and cars parked here and ambulances, fire trucks, et cetera.
Sure.
Need to get up. You're now working in a smaller space, so.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, any questions from the public? Hearing none. It was a motion in a second?
Yes.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're very excited. Thank you so much.
All right, zipping through, look at that, and we picked up time. Nice job, Matt, nice job. We have a public hearing on the National Grid poll petition.
We'll have to skip that.
All right, I'm gonna skip it. All right.
Just because it's not seven fifteen yet.
All right, so then we're skipping down to special event and entertainment licenses. Weekday and Sunday for the Flip Circus LLC at Solomon Pond. June fourteenth through the twenty-fifth of this year. Is there anyone here to speak on that?
He should be on soon, but I have someone as a guest. I don't know who that is.
If you're, uh, the person responsible for the um, hearing on Flip Circus, could you put your hand up? Not literal hand, but there's a mechanism to put your hand up.
It also be since he's thinking he's going out, they're going after the.
Yeah.
Seven fifteen, they're, they are not at this point.
Okay. Moving on.
I know we can do ENF, so.
All right, so, uh, we have a reappointment of James Royer to the zoning board of appeals. Which would run through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine.
I would make the motion to appoint Ja- uh, James Royer to the zoning board of appeals through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine.
In a second.
Uh, any more questions?
No, he's a good addition to the ZBA and the vice chair. He's been.
Yes.
Vice chair.
Yeah, and it came back unanimous that they wanted a back.
Right.
Awesome. All right, uh, we have a motion in a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, welcome back aboard there, Mr. Royer. All right, um.
We have June Miller here, if you want. We have June Miller here, if you'd like.
All right, so we will, um, June, if you wanna come down to the front so that we can hear you if we have questions. The historical commission requests to use mitigation funds for repairs at the Bullard House. So was wondering, June, if you could give like a brief. Uh, summary of the request.
Sure, um. In February, we, um, the commission was at the Board House, we were. Doing an existing conditions, uh, visit and it was. Noticed that the bathroom area space had quite a leak. At at, uh, at at the corner post. Um, as you look inside to the, to the far right and. Uh, we had some volunteers who. Took a look, a hard look at the outside as to how, as to the source of the leak. And they, um, identified it in the same way. As our town insurance company did, um, which is. Mostly, um, the dormer area. The siding is deteriorated to the point where flashing is no longer, um. Stemming any leaks inside and we need, we need to repair that. Um, also. The, uh. Adjacent roof to that dormer area is at the end of its life. It's twenty-five years old. And that was also, uh, noted by the, uh, the claims adjuster. So we are hoping that we can use, uh, our mitigation. Of the remains of our mitigation money to fund these repairs.
Questions, comments?
If I may add something, um, so one of the things that we always do, because this is a building that's on the town insurance, whenever there's a leak. Or damage to the building, we have the insurance company come out. Um, you know, I was pleased in this case that they were able to, um, point out the source, unfortunately. Uh, with roofs, um, and any kind of leaks, it's tricky because if it's something where you didn't do long-term maintenance. And obviously, this is a building we're restoring, so there isn't going to be long-term maintenance of that roof. Um, that's not something the insurance would cover, and there is a, um, twenty-five hundred dollar deductible on insurance anyways. Um, but this is something that needs to be done as part of the restoration. And, uh, I think this funding is the appropriate source for it. Um, the other town meeting articles where there is funding has more specificity in the language that relate to drainage and foundation. Um, and other improvements that aren't specific to this type of issue.
What is the dollar amount we're talking about?
Well, the, um, I have an estimate here from, um, a roofing company in Clinton. It's Michael Gibbons, and it's under ten grand. It's nine nine five zero. Uh, and that replaces that twenty-five-year-old roof as well.
The, the whole roof?
Not the, not the entire building.
Just the section.
But the second lean-to.
Yeah.
I, or what we call the second lean-to, that would be re-roofed. Also, I think the dormer area would be, is listed as being re-roofed. That's a, that's a, not a huge. Area, but the two together, plus siding, replacing the siding and flashing and water protection. Um, that's what we have a quote for, which is under the ten grand. The, as far as I know, the mitigation fund has eleven thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and forty-four cents. So there'll be a little bit left. Maybe enough.
Unless you have an overage.
Yeah, well, hopefully not.
Okay, what is the? If this doesn't get done, what happens?
Well, it just, you know, the interior of that space and above will rot further.
I mean, my, and and the reason why I asked June is that, you know, I'm just concerned, I know that you had provided feedback on the assessment of the building. That I don't, to coin a term that was used in a coffee talk meeting, Frankenstein things together. So, you know, how does that play into the overall plan to fix the Bullard House? And then, Kristen, you had. Couple meetings ago, talked about a project manager, so it just kinda sounds like we're back at, oh, here's a problem, gonna fix it. Oh, here's a problem, gonna fix it with no like real sense of one, two, three, four.
Well, I'll let June speak to the sequencing, which we've talked a lot about, but a leak needs to be fixed. I mean, cause that's just gonna continue to cause damage to the building. I mean, that that's more of an immediate issue as opposed to a ongoing project issue.
Do you have? I know you guys have been working extremely hard and I very much appreciate all the time that you've put in. Do you have any type of project plan on? This is gonna get worked on, and while this is getting worked on, these three things can get worked on, and then while these three, these are contingent. I mean, just so that we can see some progress of the overall.
I I totally understand. Um, because my patience is thin also. We're tracking a few projects right now. The first one, um, that we hope will be done very soon is. The installation of a second septic tank. And, um, we are awaiting, uh. An estimate from Paul Wheeler to to move that along. The se- the second project that could happen, um. At the same time or soon after would be a walk-in bulkhead. Which is part of, um, foundation. Uh, we have, so it would come out of CPA twenty, CPA nine, uh, Article nine. Which was way back in, uh, November twenty-one. Um, we have one estimate for that and we would need, because it's over ten. We need to go through procurement and, um, Lucy Ayers is working on that with, um. Some of our knowledgeable volunteers that we're lucky to have. We. We've worked with Kristen on, um, a comprehensive approach to the drainage problems because. It's, we don't want to do our own foundation and drainage work at the Bullard House without. Making sure that it's something else is gonna come down the hill. So, um, we're tracking that also. Okay, and.
Well, maybe at at some point, we can, we.
Yeah, anything interior will have to, is is part of that. Preservation plan that's been in place for a long time. Uh, and it's, it's phased. But that's interior and most and often cosmetic. We, we have structural issues that if we don't resolve. There's no point in doing anything inside.
Agreed.
I do think that there is some sense to. Uh, making the envelope, the exterior envelope of the house, uh. Look as if it's being taken care of. But I'm, that, I'm not sure how that plays into. These really important things.
Okay.
Um, but I would invite, uh, any comment about that. If you think it were, it's important to ask for CPA money to improve. And, uh, make. Make our house look cared for.
Well, I mean, as as Kristen said, you know, a leak is a leak and we gotta fix the leak, cause it's just gonna get worse and grosser, you know, um. Any, any other comments?
The work you do, I I remember being, hearing about the, the interior plan that was put together and it's been one of those, you know, you. There's a foundation, we can't do the foundation until we, you know, get the, the water treat drainage done and, and it's just this. And the septic system that you're now having to.
Yeah.
State laws, a septic system that would be good for a family of four in a building that's designed to be a, uh, museum. Uh, and it's just.
Yeah.
I'm only at a distance and I think some reasons, I sometimes I can't go to some of those places, like, I I don't think I could. Put up with all the frustrations you guys have managed to put up with and said, still keep this moving forward. It feels like a sales phase, but it is significantly further along than it has been.
It it is, and and I wanted to just add to, one of the tricky things is you're dealing with both horizontal and vertical construction, right? You have a lot of site work that's going on, but you also have building issues, and those are two different sort of genres, if you will, or disciplines within engineering. So one of the things that I've talked a lot with the historical commission about is a comprehensive plan, and they they've been very open to it. Um, we did have a consultant come in. Um, the consultant is expensive. Um, we've had some folks, um, from the community, Paul McKelk being one of them, that has stepped up to provide some of their construction expertise and guidance. And that, you know, is going, will save the town a lot of money, um, to do it from that way. But unfortunately, as I'm coming to realize, the sequencing is important, but they are a lot of independent little projects. Uh, you know, I I would love to be able to say, and I have from the beginning, said, let's put it out as a whole package project, but. But the more I learn about it, the more I understand why there is a sequence of events and things have to take place individually. It, it's, it is tough.
Yeah.
Um, I would like to move that, to allow the historic commission to use mitigation funds for the repairs of the Bullard House as outlined.
I'll second that. Any other comments? June, please, oh, sorry, yes. I need to come to the front also that those watching can hear you, sorry.
I have visited the Bullard House a number of times this spring, um, and uh, hadn't been in a number of years. And I think one of the things that the, the board and the town should be aware of is that in the wonderful wild world of construction, this is a very small project. And to Kristen's point, there are a lot of little projects. And we're either gonna pay through the nose by bundling them because there are a lot of unknowns in this project. I've been through several old homes myself and mysteries occur. Um, and we need to be prepared to think outside the box and be creative in our approach to this. It's been a long time. We have a bunch of committed members. Um, and we're frankly bootstrapped a little bit by regulations. And um, we're gonna pay more money to do it the way the legal world wants us to. And I'm not saying to do anything illegally, but I'm saying we need to think outside the box and to break it down. This is not a Perini scale project or a Frank McCourt project or anything like that. This is a small building. Has need, has a lot of needs, no question. But each and every one of them is not huge. It's just tying them together is really what the challenge is. And we just need to be aware that there are gonna be some bumps in the road with this. Um, and flexibility is gonna be key to getting this done. Um, the roof and the, the, the clapboard siding on the dormers is an absolute must. That's a, that's a no-brainer. Uh, because those, the roof ties into the side of the dormer with the failing clapboards and some of the non-existent flashing. You do the roof and the siding at the same time. That's, that's just the way that work is done. And um, I think they got a, a frankly, a, an attractive price to do that because it's just a lot of work, there's debris to get rid of. I mean, there, there are things involved, the, you know, the, the trash ferry doesn't, doesn't exist in projects like this. And um, the same is gonna be said for a, a walkout bulkhead. Um, and I don't know, Kristen, maybe you can research. I know we're dealing with um, prevailing wage and all that, but are there any avenues for time and material approaches? Because some of these aspects, really that's the only fair way to do it. Because if you don't do time and materials, the contractor is gonna inflate his price considerably just to cover his backside. Plain and simple, that's how the game works. That's how that industry works. Not right or wrong, that's just the way it is.
And I've been definitely assisting June in the historical commission when they have procurement questions in my role as the chief procurement officer, because I wanna make sure that we do these things right and we try to get creative as much as we can. Um, but you know, it, it is a challenge. You can use sole proprietors, you can buy the materials yourself, there are different ways we can work around it. So I, I think you've got a, a good team together um, working on this.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, uh, we have a motion and a second. Oh, motion, yes you did. And I seconded. Yes, you did, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, keep us where the cost is so close. If it starts to creep, please make a phone call and let us know right away.
Sure.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. June.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so before we go back to the public uh, hearing on the poll, uh, it occurred to me that we did not close the public hearing on the uh, all pouring license and common victular license. So can I officially close that at seven-twenty-seven?
Sub moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome, aye, all right. Is our poll person here?
Yep.
Excellent, so. Uh, under the provisions of general laws of Massachusetts, chapter one sixty-six, and any additions or amendments thereto, please be advised that at their meeting on Monday, May twentieth, twenty-twenty-four at now seven-twenty-eight uh, PM, the Berlin Select Board will consider a request to get permission to Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid, to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Linden Street National Grid to install one SO pole on Linden Street, beginning at a point approximately zero feet southeast of the central line at the intersection of Ball Hill Road and continuing approximately eight-hundred-and-ninety feet in the southeast direction. At two forty-seven Linden Street National Grid to install one sole-owned pole, approximately eight-hundred-and-ninety feet southeast of the intersection of Ball Hill Road. This pole is required for an electric service upgrade at this intersection. Location approximately as shown on the plan attached. The petition can be found on the Berlin website under news announcements as posted with this public hearing. If you have questions, you can call us, um, and there's your hybrid. So the meeting is now open on the poll.
Can you take a motion to open the public?
I have a motion to open the poll. Second, all right, we are now opened. So.
Hi, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Yeah, hi, my name is Javier Morales. Um, here representing National Grid tonight. Um, and as you read, I'd like to request approval for a grant of location for a new pole uh, directly in front of two forty-seven Linden Street. Uh, this new pole will be required for electrical service upgrade at that address.
Are there any questions?
Javier, is this for a residential?
It is, yes. Yep.
Are there any questions in the audience?
No.
No?
No.
All right, uh, can I get a motion to approve the pole and wire locations for Javier?
Uh, sub moved.
Second. All right, motion second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Javier.
All right, great, thank you, have a nice night. Appreciate it.
You too. And we'll do this on time, uh, I move to close the meeting, uh, public meeting hearing at seven-thirty PM.
Second door, should everyone works.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, is our flip circus person here?
Hi, June.
All right, um, no. Can we maybe move that to next meeting? Please? All right, uh, done, done, done.
Have we done everything?
I think so. Yes, all right, Kristen, you are up for the TA report.
Okay, I will try to keep it brief because as always, it is available online on the town's website. Um, so obviously we are going to be talking about, oh, I'm sorry, I just closed the window. Give me one second. I'm moving too quickly here, there, yeah. Um, we did have annual town meeting, which turned into my very first two-night annual town meeting, but I understand that that happens here, so I'm learning.
Not to be the last.
And not to be the last, first, but not the last. Um, so um, I was happy that we were able to pass the town budgets, um, retiree health and dental insurance, the fourth modification to the River Bridge Development Agreement, funding to complete the upstairs renovation at the Public Safety Complex, the renovation of the sports fields at BMS and the new digital municipal information signs that we'll have at the school and in the center of town. Um, as you probably are aware, um, the voters did pass the Finance Committee recommended budget for the regional school district, which fell approximately one-point-one-four million dollars short of the school committee requested budget. It then returned to the school committee for what's known as reconsideration. The following day, on May seventh, the school committee voted to send back essentially the same budget to the town for a revote minus four-hundred-thousand dollars in capital costs for the BMS HVAC upgrades. So this now changes that difference between the town meeting voted budget amount and the school um, requested amount to seven-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars, three-hundred-and-twelve dollars. So uh, we did receive the letter uh, last Monday at five o'clock, um, letting us know that those were the new numbers. And we have forty-five days to reschedule a special town meeting to reconsider this amended school budget, which we will be discussing later on this evening. Uh, grants, we have a lot going on right now. We did just submit a Green Communities Grant, many thanks to Energy Committee Chair Tim Wysocki for working with us. It's for weatherization and HVAC system control, a system and control upgrades for the town offices side of this building in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, seventy-four dollars. We'll find out late summer, early fall if awarded. And if awarded, in part, some of this energy savings will help to offset the cost of this project um, in order to meet the return on investment that is required through the Green Communities Grant. We are also working on a grant from the Mass Office of Disabilities on ADA um, improvements to various buildings. Also, a website redesign to feature accessibility com- um, improvements and a lobby kiosk to assist residents in easily identifying and locating the services that they need around town. Um, also, the planning board has requested a one-stop grant um, that was submitted by the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission to help update Berlin's zoning bylaws. So it would be what's known as a comprehensive zoning bylaw rewrite, if funded, um, to help address any changes in mass general law, remedy any conflicts um, and create a clear, concise and easy-to-understand set of zoning bylaws that support smart growth housing for all ages and income groups. Uh, also, we had our ARPA annual report, as was just mentioned in the audit. Um, that the ARPA reporting period is a little differently, it goes April first to March thirty-first. So as of March thirty-first, we have expended three-hundred-and-eight-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars with six-hundred-and-fifty-nine, six-twenty-six less, uh, left to spend, rather. Um, I do regret to announce that our COA director has submitted her resignation, Victoria Flynn St. Coran, who has been our COA director and social services director for the last four years. Um, want to thank her for all of her service, um, and we will be, we're working on a revised job description for the permanent position that was voted at town meeting on May sixth. That will then go to Personnel Committee for review. And we are also doing initial screening interviews for the Assistant Treasurer Collector position this coming week with the five most qualified candidates. And we continue on with police union negotiations, but they are going well. Uh, radio project, not going as well unfortunately. Um, the low bidder on the project did not factor in the cost of a crane to reach the towers into their quote. And they therefore requested a change order of ninety-two-hundred dollars. However, the second low bidder did factor a crane into their quote. So the requested change order would have basically resulted in the low bidder no longer being the low bidder. So we did have to reach out uh, to council because we didn't wanna get into a bid protest situation. And um, we informed the vendor that their uh, change order was denied. And basically, they needed to do their due diligence on the project. There was a site visit, everybody else had submitted for that, they just did not include it in their price. Um, the company's been non-responsive uh, since April seventeenth. So under the terms of the contract, we were allowed to terminate with seven days' notice um, on May thirteenth. So effective today, that contract is null and void. And the project will now go back out to bid in coordination with the Phase Two that the Select Board voted. But oddly enough, it's going to work better this way because we can coordinate the antennas with the cabling and the repeater. So sometimes weird things happen for a reason. Um, also, I'm working with USDA on the four-hundred-thousand dollars in federal funds that Lori Trehan's office secured for us for Phase Three of the project, which will be adding a third site that is proposed to be another antenna on the hotel. Um, Wheeler Pond Dam removal is currently in design phase. We're gonna be meeting with town officials and project um, representatives to continue to discuss any potential impacts as a result of this. I did happen to spend the day in negotiations with the Neshoba Valley Regional Dispatch District's Dispatchers Union as their contract expires June thirtieth. Um, working on ambulance billings and collections. And um, I did want to add, we have two new police officers, Alex Lima and Thomas McDonald. Um, I was fortunate enough to attend their police academy graduation. And I'd like to let folks know that Officer Lima was the class leader and received an award for his leadership. Officer McDonald was, received an award also for being the top shot with regards to his marksmanship. They only give out seven awards at the graduation and both of our recruits received awards, which is rather remarkable. I like to say we are small, but we are mighty. And uh, our folks definitely um, exhibited that and they made Berlin proud. Um, we are also working on implementing the retiree health insurance effective July one. RFPs for the Public Safety Complex upstairs renovation design and the Complete Streets Project, also trying to get the servers for cable. They need two new servers, um, as we're funded through the FY twenty-four capital plan. Still working on getting additional feedback for the facility study. And um, the last bullet point is more of an update. Uh, during coffee talk, a question was raised about whether or not the Sunnys intended to remove the liquor store at the River Bridge property. I did briefly speak with Matt Senni about this when he was in and there are currently no plans to do so.
I, I would ask that we send an email.
Okay.
And ask Chris and Matt, see, see if we get a different answer, perhaps. I think a lot of people in town are, would like to see that gone. Agreed?
Agreed.
I'm sure they'd like to sell the land to someone who developed something on it too.
Mm-hmm, right. And then they wouldn't have to take down the liquor store.
Okay, sure.
Uh, the only question that I had, I know that there are several um, assessments that are outstanding on the facility study. Um, I think we just put a pin in it and say by X date, it needs to be in. If it's not in, then by X date, the board will do whatever the board's gonna do.
What would you like that date to be? Should we say June fifteenth?
I would even say sooner because it was due in April. Um, I would say by May thirty-first.
That work for everyone?
It does, my gist is, is that what's gonna happen with that information from May thirty-first to our next meeting? Like, if it's just gonna sit there, I wouldn't mind giving those people another week if, if we're not gonna take any action on anything they submit.
Well, um, if the information does come in, I've been pretty good at turning it around and updating it back to Kristen. So it can turn and we can make an agenda item on the third to review the information and figure out next steps.
That's good. Thirty-first works.
All right. Are there any other questions for Kristen?
Um, I just, I, I note, I, I, I don't look at you, but I think June is the recipient of this comment. Is that for the four-hundred-thousand-dollar federal grant for the power and six-hundred-thousand dollars of ARPA funds, we should be careful about the timing spending uh, the federal dollars so we don't trigger that unified audit, which would be added, I added one-year messiness expense. Um, I, there might not be anything we can do about it, but at least to be aware of it now, and I'm sure you would anyway, but uh.
Unfortunately, our, our fire chief has been very successful at getting some federal grants lately as well. So it looks like we're going to have that audit.
You know, and if we have, but, but it's.
I say unfortunately, a bit.
If we do that audit, we're getting several hundreds of thousands of dollars in, it will be a nice watch for folks. I just, I'd hate to, at the end of the year, have like seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand triggers that we, like, if we said seven-hundred-and-seventy, you know, that we suddenly had to pay a bunch, that would have been a problem. But uh, getting more federal dollars would be nice too.
Point taken.
All right, anything else? Is, is there a meeting set up about the Wheeler Pond Dam?
Not yet, um, they came in, uh, they just wanted to give an update. Um, they came in and provided basically a brief update. They've got some state money to do design of the removal. And they asked if they could meet with like conservation, highway, planning. So we're trying to find a date that works for everyone.
Okay. I, I've sort of followed it over the years. So I wouldn't mind um, sitting in if, if there isn't a problem with me doing that.
I don't have an issue if that works for everybody.
Anybody else care? It's been uh, dragging on for years and years, so, I know.
Sure, I can certainly add you on the email and when we get a date, I'll make sure we let you know.
Okay. All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Apparently the man, the gentleman who lives up surface is here, playing the bat.
Oh.
Oh, you're here. We missed you.
Sorry.
Come on down to the. Come on down to the front.
We talk a little fast sometimes.
Good evening. Thank you for showing up. So could you, I know that you were here last year, correct?
No.
Someone was here. Someone was here from Flip Circus.
No, we're not Flip Circus.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, the Gongcha Boboty.
Oh, that's coming.
Oh, that's coming.
You didn't miss anything.
I know, really. So don't go too far. You'll be back in a few minutes. Alright. Since we don't have any old business, we have a boltload of new business.
Yes.
A boltload. So let us jump into it. The first one is the one-day special pour license from Lost Shoe to be done at Solomon Pond Mall on June twentieth, July eighteenth, and August fifteenth. So it sounds like they're, uh, the mall is starting again. Yeah, come back around. So that's cool.
There will, I think there was gonna be food trucks or something also, or?
Well, I know last year they had one of the people from the Food Court come down. So I don't know if they'll do the same, but that's awesome. There any issues with, with this? I'm looking through there.
All, all the, it's all good.
It's all good.
Heads are good, okay. So I could make the motion to approve the one-day special pouring license for Lost Shoe Brewing at the Solomon Pond Mall on those one, two, three dates.
I would second.
Alright, any other questions? Uh, hearing none? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so thank you, Lost Shoe, uh, for your.
The three of them, B, C, and D are all nineteen Carter.
Yes, but we should, I know, but we should probably, since they're individual ones, we should probably just whiz through them individually. Next up is the one-day special pour license for Loyal Foe, F O E Brewing at nineteen Carter on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. So coming up in about a month.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? Nope. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
Race these all down, everybody.
There, D's on it. Alright, um, moving on to item C. We also have an additional one-day, uh, special pouring license from Lost Shoe Brewing, also at nineteen Carter, for July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. No issues?
No issue, no.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, um, no other, no further questions? So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, Lost Shoe.
If I can make a Scribner's error to D, it's Iamelo, not Lemelo, cuz I can't spell. It's I, not L.
Oh.
Iamelo.
Iamelo, oh, for the next.
Or Iamallo, sorry. See, I can't say this one at all. It's, it starts with an I, not an L.
Alright, we will apologize for the, that is correct. We will apologize upfront for, uh, mis, mispronouncing your name, but we have another one-day special pouring license for Iamelo Wine Cellar, Cellar also at nineteen Carter on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, Common Victular License for the River Bridge Pizza and Deli at Three Bassett Road.
Motion to approve.
This is a renewal? This is new?
I'm looking.
This apparently should have been transferred when the license, when the liquor license was transferred, yeah.
Okay.
So we now have all the paperwork and.
Alright, right.
Alright, so motion, a question?
All in favor? I'm sorry, I, I motion.
Second.
Alright, um, so giving that it's all together now as one license, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, now, now come on back. We tried to zip through them as quickly as possible, so you weren't sitting back there. So this is for Gongcha in Berlin up at fifty-two Highland Common East. So can you tell us about it?
Yes, we are franchise of this Gongcha USAs. They started in Taiwan, but now it's owned by the US. And we have about five hundred, uh, location in the US so far, and we are hoping to add another one onto the list.
Currently, there's about twenty-two in the state of Massachusetts. There's one in Marlboro, Burlington Mall, around the Boston area.
Nice. Um, and the feedback, Dee? No issues?
Estimated opening dates?
Hopefully by the end of next week.
We got our.
Really?
We wait for the fire department to do the final check.
I actually represent the franchise, and not every county requires a VC. And we found this out to one of our fire, uh, inspection walkthrough. And so we will, we submit it later, so I really appreciate taking the time and giving us a chance. But we got a final inspection with the fire department, building department on Wednesday. And I think about forty-eight hours after that, we can schedule our fine health inspection, and we have everything ready, and so.
Perfect timing. It's supposed to be blazingly hot the end of the week, so.
That's what we're trying to catch it up with.
Well done on the weather report.
Uh, so I, this is then is conditional upon the fire inspection and health inspection.
It would be.
But we'd so move.
Alright.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. My, my roommate will probably be one of the first people in line.
Alright, whizzing, continuing to whiz through new business. We are down to the Junk Dealer License Renewal, which is Berlin Auto Parts, Inc. at seventy-six Coburn Road.
So I would ask that this would be contingent upon completing, um, the inspections. I believe there's one or two that are still outstanding.
So moved. Did you, or did you say that?
I have not said that yet, no.
Okay.
I'll second.
So do we know which ones, Kristen, need to be finished up? Fire and, and, okay. And do they have an approximate time-ish, maybe? No?
The chief didn't give a time.
Okay. We wouldn't issue the license until the inspection's complete.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second on a, uh, continuation of the license pending.
Used to be July, a July first one.
I think so.
The notes I had in the.
Okay, sure.
It's a weird off-cycle one. I think it is a, yeah.
The others, everything else is July first. This is the off-cycle one.
It's a strange one.
And there's been no further issues or concerns from neighbors regarding noise or light pollution, correct?
Not since the last time. We had this on the agenda last year. We did, I was expecting perhaps to receive an email, and I have not since the last time. So they did make a lot, yeah, they did make the changes that were requested by the Board of Health. And hopefully, where I'm going with no news is good news.
Alright.
As a whole, over the years, where there's been some reasonable requests from the town, that they have generally done.
They have positively responded in a timely manner.
Yeah.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other questions? Alright, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, uh, next up is the change of manager, Beer Wine Package Store License, Energy North, Inc., two sixty-five Central.
It's right by the four ninety-five entrance ramp. It's a little mobile. Because at first I thought it was Naria, so Chris and I had to talk about that because I, we were both confused. But just, yeah, just a simple change of manager. Everything was in order.
Alright, any questions?
No.
Alright, uh, motion?
So, uh, moved.
Second.
Alright, uh, no other questions? All those in, uh, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we get.
Now we get to the good ones. Um, so the Berlin Rockwall Rent Approval Request, twenty twenty-four rents.
Yes, so they come over every year. They, they have to align with the state and HUD approved limits. We had these reviewed by Stephanie Peterson at Metro West, uh, Esbit Housing Consortium, who is our affordable housing consultant. And she agreed that everything was in order and the rents fell within the affordable ranges. So I would respectfully request that the board approve the rents.
Do you know if they're full? If the apartments are full?
That I know. I can ask the question.
No worries. It, it was just more of a curiosity.
There's a waiting list for the affordables, as every time we've asked.
Yeah, they didn't say this time around when they submitted it, but.
Okay. Yeah, no, that, it was just a curiosity question, that's all. Alright, um.
One of my least favorite votes, just because the idea that these numbers are affordable is.
It's amazing, isn't it?
Yes. And so for, uh, they show for, uh, the one-bedroom, if you're at eighty percent of, uh, median income, the one-bedroom is at seventeen hundred and ninety-four dollars a month. The two-bedroom, the affordable unit is nineteen hundred and sixty-five dollars. If you're at fifty percent of the median, the studio is eleven hundred, uh, and seventy-four. The one-bedroom is thirteen thirteen, and the two-bedroom is fourteen twenty-two. Um, and at fifty percent of the median, I, 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 the idea that you're coming up with fourteen hundred dollars a month for rent, but the, the, the. I know, the, the way the world works for housing, we can't blame one sort of apartment building in town. They have worked whether these numbers are, meet all the legal requirements. And although I don't care much for it, uh, uh, I, I make the motion because it is what the rules say that they can do and.
And these are HUD figures for Eastern Mass, Eastern Worcester, rather, yeah.
It probably would be higher if we weren't doing this.
Yeah, right. And, and if we didn't do this, they, they do list what the, uh, they don't list it here, what the, the regular rents are. I know that the regular rents on their website are significantly higher than that if you're, you're not affordable.
They go up to thirty-seven hundred because I looked into.
Yep.
And also make a payment maybe.
I was, yeah, no. Alright, so I, I move to, to approve these rents.
Okay, and I'll second it.
Question, uh, asked and answered. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, see if we can get this scholarship corrected. We always call it fifteen different things. This are the announcements, the award announcements for the Mabel Felton Marble Scholarship Fund.
So I thought the three, uh, girls who apply were impressive. And I would, the amount in the fund is approximately three thousand. So if we'd like to, we could divide it up and give them each a thousand dollars. So I would make a motion to give Chloe Casperson, Emerson Walsh, and Julie Restegini um, one thousand dollars from the scholarship fund.
Um, I would second that.
Uh, absolutely. The, the, um, letters of recommendation just blew me away on what they're doing for service and how they're participating in their school and, and extracurricular activities. So hats off to all three very young women and wish them the best. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, ladies. We appreciate it.
And Mabel Felton Marble is actually in South Cemetery. I go by the stone.
And a, and a shout-out to the family who continue to do this year over years. So they can't even look at a camera, I don't even know where to look. But thank you for, um, for that continued gracious donation. Alright, so up next, we have the FY twenty-five Select Board Meeting Dates.
Alright, Dee has put together this lovely calendar, which I like very much, um, with our proposed meeting dates. And, um, there's a color code down at the bottom that, uh, does holidays, the meeting dates, when town meeting is, when the proposed coffee talks are, and, um, proposing our post-town meeting, meeting. So for your discussion.
I thought it looked very good.
We, we typically have not been meeting the Tuesday after town like.
Right, that was the only thing I saw, too.
We have not, but, um, we did have it on the schedule this year, just in case. But we, we can certainly, we didn't, we didn't, so I can, we can take it off.
Because I, I also, there's, I think that the way budgets work, the idea that we might get away with three meetings in March is great to think about. But there's also nothing saying that we can't add meetings if necessary. So, you know, if the budget grows smooth and we don't need to meet on the seventeenth or thirty-first, you know, if I had my druthers, we'd have everything in the mail by the seventeenth. We will have more than a month to digest the numbers and talk about things in town.
Right. Except the school has until the twenty-first to get us their budget. But, yeah. No, I agree with you. And I figured we did meet five times in March.
A revision to the, the joint, the, the, whatever the agreement is with the town, with the.
We've been all agreement.
Because when we did that, we, when that was put together, it was that date is always gonna be a problem. Like, oh, don't worry about it. We have to put it there because there's some sort of state law that makes that sort of, they will always have it there. And now they don't, and there's no way for us to have a town budget done if fifty percent of the budget is not given to us until three or four days before it has to be in the mail.
There's no time for discussion.
Right. And when we don't have discussion, we have, you know, town meetings where at the floor, town meeting is not the point where you have a discussion about a seven hundred thousand dollar variance between two different groups. It's just that there's not space for that, that nuance. But I think the meeting agenda is fine. I, I'd remove the thirteenth of May.
And I think we did meet four or five times in March, so that was an ambitious ask. But, uh, we can definitely add more. I know the FinCom will be meeting every Wednesday in March, so.
I, I, I agree the thirteenth of May should be gone. I think in most cases, this year may be an anomaly. But I think in most cases, everybody is just spent by town meeting. And we could all use a little break the next week.
Well, and if do, we have to, we call it.
Right.
Correct.
But there you go. So thank you for all the color coding there, Ms. Dee.
It was very helpful.
So we're meet, so in June, uh, we're meeting, uh, the third, the seventeenth, the twenty-fourth, and then our meeting uh, kicking off next fiscal year will be July fifteenth, unless something explodes and we need to meet prior.
Um, is that, there's usually closing of the year books. So the eighth would obviously be too soon to close the books, so we'd have enough time to get in. And so the eighth, fifteenth, the twenty-ninth should be.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we may end up, depending on what's going on, canceling the twenty-fourth, perhaps, and needing the eighth. It depends on what's going on with line item transfers at the end of the year.
And the twenty-fourth of?
The, of June.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm crossing fiscal years now.
No, I didn't know.
June of twenty-four, we're scheduled, you just said, to meet three seventeen and twenty-four. But if something comes up, we may need to meet the eighth of July twenty-four because it just depends on what's going on with end of the year book closing, so. We might have to have a little flexibility there, depending on when everybody's around, too.
Keep us posted.
We, we kind of practice of having like, what is it, every other week during the summer?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, I, I think the schedule is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, it takes not much to add another meeting if some things come up that we have to.
Oh, yeah, or move them around.
Yep.
Alright, can you get a motion on the calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, thank you for all the questions. Uh, all those in favor of our FY twenty-five meeting dates? And then Dee, you'll get these up whenever.
You bet.
Thank you kindly. Alright, uh, next on the agenda is the Town Meeting Administrator Request to Carry Over Vacation Time.
Um, so my contract allows me to carry over five days of vacation, which would be forty hours. Unfortunately, at this point, I have eighty-eight hours, um, because I just, it's been one of those years. Uh, I would, I am requesting permission to carry over eighty hours, which would be two weeks of vacation. It's, uh, my contract's quite different than the non-union, um, bylaw, which allows one and one-half times your vacation to be carried over. So if I didn't have a contract, I'd be allowed to carry six weeks of vacation over, but I can only carry over one. So I'm requesting permission from the board to carry over two.
As a reminder, the, the reason that's in your contract is to remind you to take time off.
I, I understand. We had a bit of an extraordinary budget season.
Yeah, we've had two extraordinary budget seasons. I mean, that, and we've had a COVID year and, which is pre-you, but like, things come up, and it is, is important to still try to, and I would, I am bummed when you're on vacation. I have an email to send out, but, but that, that, uh, we need to respect that, that people need time off.
I can try to do a better job.
Yeah, I mean, the, and the thing is too, is that, you know, you have a capable board, so I can't imagine if you took one or two days off that there wasn't anything, that the three of us couldn't get together and get the people in that we needed to, to make a decision, so.
I'd like to think it's almost you can take a week off, because that's where you really start rejuvenating.
Well, and I am actually taking, this is, I was gonna add this. I'm planning to take a week in July and a week in September. So that would actually use up both of those.
My only concern is that, um, and I, seconding, seconding. My only concern is that um and I seconding Scott's opinion that PTO is given to take. PTO. That, are we setting a precedence, pay time off? Are we setting a precedence for other people who can't use their vacation and then come forward to say? I couldn't use, can I carry? Can I carry? So that's my only concern.
That's a fair point.
And when and if that happens, we'll.
Right.
Discuss it. Um but uh, I mean, this kind of falls, I think, in line with the next. Item that we'll talk about, about the change in hours for the town offices, so.
Um I would move that we approve the town administrator's request to carry over eighty hours of of PTO, pay time off, into the next fiscal year.
Can we force her to take time off?
I can leave right now. No, I'm just kidding.
I will keep the door locked in the morning.
There, you can take my keys.
Alright. No, I mean, and you're feeding us. I know, kidding, I said so far now, uh you know, kidding aside, is that, again, it's it's been a weird season. But we've had other weird seasons.
True. I will do a better job at finding that balance.
Well, there's burnout that, which obviously you're concerned about, um and. Answering email on the weekend, there is nothing on fire that needs to be responded to at ten o'clock on a Saturday night.
Well, I have to say, I've been trained, so this is part of my my training and my upbringing in municipal world, that if a board member emails or calls, I respond. So if it can wait, then don't eat.
We need to start putting disclaimers on the top.
I do.
Yeah, that does help, and when you do that, I'm like.
I say, this is, this is not a not-on-fire, urgent, you need to get back to me issue, but please think about blah, 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 blah.
I always have to check my email, though, so I I really, a quick question is not a a problem, but.
I I have work in even here, so I know, I I totally understand that, yeah.
But no, I I feel that that's part of my responsibility uh as a TA. If if you contact me, I I should respond.
Yeah. Um and and I think it's.
Like, absolutely not.
Taking the vacation also sets that like, the department head should take their vacation, their employee should take their vacation.
And I tell them to do it.
Again, at my office, I really hate it anytime one of my employees is on vacation, and I always encourage them to take their vacation. Um I have.
So you have a motion.
I have a motion, yeah.
I will second, although PTO to me means parent-teacher organization.
Pay time off.
That's a little different.
Pay time off, PTO.
Never heard of that.
Alright, alright, so lots of discussion. Kristen will nag you when we see you here far too often to remind you just to.
Do we need a vote?
Yeah, we need a vote, so um all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Alright.
Won't come before your next year with the same request.
Alright, so next up um is the discussed change to hours for town offices.
So this has actually been something that's been kind of kicking around in my brain for the past almost two years that I've been here to see. No one here on Fridays, or people that are like, well, how come certain offices are open and other ones aren't? And how do we know who we can go to or when we should be here? Um so I asked Dee if she would do some research into this and speak to some of the departments that are open. And I'm going to switch with you so that you can speak. Well, otherwise you won't be on.
The entire room is on camera.
Yeah, she's like, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Oh my goodness. Paper.
I know.
Paper, what is this?
Don't know what paper is, yes, yes.
Thank you. Alright, Ms. D, take it away.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the board. Uh we would like to ask the board to consider closing town offices on Fridays. Currently, offices that are open on Fridays are the Town Administrator and Select Board Office, Treasurer Collector Office, Accounting and COA. Closed town office departments include Town Clerk, Building, Board of Health, and Assessor. We've noted the following items specific to our town of Berlin. The foot traffic in town offices, in the town offices building is extremely light on Fridays. The people that do come in, we often turn away because the office they're seeking is closed. So by closing the offices, we could do a few things. One is to eliminate the confusion for residents. Not knowing which offices are open or closed on Friday because the town offices would be closed. We propose the following hours for this change, Monday eight to seven, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight to five. And uh employees already regularly work enough hours to either leave early on Fridays or to take Fridays off. Employees could have the option to work while they eat lunch. Employees able to work longer days and have the option of coming in on Fridays to make up time. And employees may choose to work on Fridays in certain circumstances. For example, weeks with Monday holidays that have, if we have a meeting, or payroll that has to be done. And working from home is always available if an urgent matter arises. So there've been many studies, and you see that Kristen has dropped in many articles in the drive for you. Um about a forty work week. Right now, it's very difficult to attract and um find good employees for municipal work. Uh that we hear that all the time from MMA as well as other uh towns, and we see that ourselves. So this is a great way to attract and retain employees. A shorter work week can boost productivity, as employees are often more focused and efficient while they're here at work. Less chatter, more work, less days to get it done. Uh improve, an improvement in employee morale. Uh and extending town hall hours on days when we're open provide greater flexibility to folks who work traditional hours. So that they can come in, especially for open late one evening, as we're proposing on Mondays. So that um people can stop on their way home from work. And it would hopefully reject re-reduce burnout and stress. So, board members, do you have any questions?
I have two, of course, I'll go last.
Um I have a, if I may. I would encourage the the longer, I I I'm in favor of flexible schedules. I have a lot of flexibles with my own employees. Um I would like the longer day not to be Monday. Uh Monday is a typically a holiday day, and that means the amount of hours that you're paying out for holiday pay will go up. Because of Monday holidays. Um uh I also, uh so just that, the 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 Town Clerk, the uh Board of Health and Assessor. Don't report through the Select Board, and so if we make changes to hours for offices, are they planning on following suit? Because I I worry if we end up with, again, different departments, open different hours on different days. We're sort of back to sort of what we're looking at sort of right now, and would encourage this, or if we do a motion, make it contingent upon the other departments sort of following suit.
We're not asking them to change their hours, we were just noting that they're not closed on Fridays.
No, they are closed.
That they are, I'm sorry, that they are closed on Fridays.
But we go to these, that all the departments would be open all of these hours?
No, we're asking for the departments that work currently on Fridays to be open during these hours.
And so we will still have different hours for Town Clerk, Building Inspector, Board of Health, Assessor, and and Accounting and Select Board's Office.
We can't dictate the Town Clerk's hours, and we can't do that one.
Right, or or Board of Health or.
Correct.
Assessor.
Although we create our hours to be contingent upon them also following on 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 the same pattern. I just, I think it would be easier for the town if we all knew that the town off town, that these are the hours that the offices are open.
The only challenge with that is that where forty-hour a week employees, they're not, so we wouldn't be able to have those offices be half the same hours.
For instance, the assessing office closes at two?
They, their hours are nine to.
Nine to one.
Three, or nine to one to the public, yeah.
I, it might be great if there's at least one night a week that like all of town offices were open, so that people could get in to do things, and just know that. I don't know, Tuesday night, Wednesday night is the night that if you work nine-to-five jobs, you can get in after hours to get something done. Um those are sort of my comments on this. Again, I generally like flexible hours.
Chris? So um. I don't know whether Peg and Scott remember, but when Margaret was on board. She was trying to get all the nights um or all the um days and nights. To coincide so that, you know, everybody was in the office um every day, Monday through Friday. It's the same issue, it's just that um, you know, the the hours are different for every office. And that, it was hard, so I don't know whether having everybody work on Friday. Or having everybody not work on Friday is the answer.
It is a very skeleton crew on Fridays, with very few people coming in or calling.
I believe the word you're looking for is ghost town. On Friday.
It is.
Um, the only two questions that I had, where you have employees could have the option to work while they eat lunch. That's illegal.
Part of the.
Yeah.
Personal policy.
Yes. You don't.
Have to go through the policies.
Yep.
Two days, we worked a long time on, that was one part that we had to put in, we cannot eat that.
And I know where I work, um if you're late or want to leave early, you can't like, take your.
Skip your lunch.
Yeah, you can't skip your lunch to make up for it, so I just want to make sure that that's.
Everybody's entitled to lunch.
Everybody is entitled to lunch, like everyone, so yes, and then the only other one I had um. Is there a working-from-home policy? One was started, was one started, am I making stuff up? I'm looking at.
It's COVID.
Okay, so.
Well, the reason I put that one in is because specifically in our office. Sometimes there's something arises where we, we just have to hop on and take care of it immediately.
Oh, absolutely, and I have no issue. I mean, I'm totally remote, and I work from home all the time, but I just. And again, there's that cynical side that people push the envelope of, oh, I don't feel like it. Oh, the dog's sick, I can't come in today, you know, type of thing, so I don't know where that would fall on a priority list. To either look at the one that we have for COVID and maybe tweak it, or come up with a new one. Oh, and we have uh Kristen Rubin coming to the mic, yes?
Hi, fifteen McIntyre Court Mall, bro, am I still allowed to be here even though I'm not from Berlin? Is that okay?
You are allowed.
Um, I'm just listening at this point.
Oh, you didn't want to be in the corner?
No, I. To to, well, participate if need be.
No, I agree, the about a four-day work week, and yeah, you drive by this place at noon time on Friday, and.
Do we want to be the one who starts it, though?
Yes.
I know there are some already, but.
And and that's your second sheet.
I think so.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, and there's an even larger poll in the in the Google Drive.
Okay.
I would, I would just have the same thing, uh request that uh that there'd be. Be consideration for Friday being open on tax due dates, so an excise tax or property taxes need to be, the the last day due is on Friday. That they are open. I can even speak from experience a few years ago, when the day of that due date. Even the online thing was coming up and not working properly, so I had to come down here and pay it, so. I don't think you'd have people too happy if any issues came up like that in the day due, you're not open. I can ex- potentially three times a year, right? It's only if it lands on Friday, but that would be something I would say you'd want to consider.
I did actually have a conversation with our Treasurer Collector. Um I actually had a conversation with the Accounting Department and the Treasurer Collector's Office, because they're the offices affected. And um she mentioned that right away, well, if a if a due date's on a Friday, I'm gonna come in and work. Because, and we'd have to put a message out there to let people know, but she may have some wiggle room in the. In the due dates as well.
The reason that it says, discuss change of hours for town offices on the agenda is because I. I felt as though I was need some additional time to think about it. So I would request that if you want to take a vote, we put it on for next meeting date.
I was not expecting a vote tonight on this. I was expecting a little bit of a conversation. I I I some feedback, I I expect you to tweak it a little bit, the lunch policy probably has to be changed, uh figure out we're gonna deal with tax.
I think there's a lot of things that would.
Monday holidays. Um and whether or not some of the other boards might even be open to following the, so there's an evening a week that a lot of off, done offices are open. People can know that, I don't, I could care less what the day is, but there's a night that that people can say, oh, this is the night that I know that most of the offices are open.
We can certainly pull those offices and ask them if they're willing to.
Can reach out and do some more research.
Absolutely.
The one thing I was just gonna add is I can see, you know, even uh even employees that are hourly are hitting, the. Ones, the the few that are here on Friday, are hitting their forty hours before we get to Friday, so you even see people having to leave by noon. That are hourly on Friday, so by the afternoon on Friday, I feel like I'm constantly disappointing people. Because I'm usually here and I go out in the hallway and they're looking for X, Y, Z, and I have to say, I'm sorry, I can take your tax bill, but I can't really help you too much. So I think from my perspective, it was eliminating that confusion of having people come looking for services because the town hall was open. But we didn't have all of the services consolidated, and I would like to get them aligned as much as possible. That was one of the first things I thought of. But when you have employees that aren't working, that are working thirty-three hours versus forty, i- it's gonna be tough to try to align it. We can certainly ask about the night, though. I think that's an important service to provide to the residents.
Absolutely.
Um and then you just have to make sure that the problem on Friday afternoon doesn't creep to Thursday afternoon, that they've hit their forty hours by the time they get to Thursday, so. Yes, so I I I again, I generally like the concept, I think with some tweaks, we'd have something. I think when we came back for on a vote, I would also potentially have an effective date in it, like. Uh how is this phase D, and how are we gonna communicate it to people, so that, that's the only reason I would be able to vote tonight, is I don't know if this is taking effect like tomorrow.
Yeah.
Or uh or six months in the house.
Sure, and that's, that was my last statement, was if you're not ready to vote on this, would you like it on the next?
Or that maybe it's contingent on going to bi-weekly payroll.
We talked about maybe doing a trial run for the summer.
And that's what I was gonna ask, because I mean, it definitely needs to be monitored, you know, kind of like the comp time, I have eight bazillion hours on comp time. Well, how do you know you have eight bazillion hours because I said so? It's like, um, so. Yeah, I mean, if you come back, I mean, the nice thing is that our next meeting is in a couple of weeks, so it's not like you need to like skippy-do giddy up for Monday.
Right.
You've got some time to poll the other departments and um put it up a little bit, but yeah, with the with the. Office being a ghost town on Friday, and if there's other ways that we can take care of the public, let's get in front of it and do do something for folks.
Okay, well, thank you for your consideration.
Appreciate it, Dee.
And I'd like to thank Dee for taking the initiative and working on.
Yeah, very good, Dee.
Well done, Dee. Alright.
Yeah.
Okay.
Always very smart.
Alright, so next up on the agenda is to set the date, time, location for a special town meeting. For the school budget as requested by the Berlin Boylston Regional School District.
Alright, if I may, through the chair.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um let me preface this by saying that we went back and forth on this many times. Because we were trying to get the earliest date possible that folks were available, so I started with the Town Clerk and her. Um uh election workers or her um checkers in that work at the town meeting. And what I was trying to go for was somewhere closer to like the tenth. Um unfortunately, that was not a good date for folks, so the options became the third of June or the seventeenth of June. The problem with the third of June is that we have a bylaw in place that we are required to mail the warrant out to all residents. Fourteen days in advance of town meeting, and we have to have that warrant printed and mailed and prepared. And the board hadn't even picked a date yet and voted on it, then we have to have. Read FinCom, have a meeting, have discussion, make a recommendation, which goes in the warrant. So it makes it very difficult to try to have this meeting before um uh June seventeenth. So that is my recommendation, is June seventeenth.
And there will only be one item on the warrant, correct?
We did, that is correct. Um the moderator did actually submit over the weekend an item regarding electronic voting. But I would recommend we put that on the fall town meeting. He was just wanting to change the bylaws, so it was reflective of how we do the existing. Town voting with the remotes.
Is there a part, and we'll do a public comment in a moment or public questions, um. Is there an opportunity to have this start earlier so that more voters can actually come to the meeting and it's not late and goes till eleven? I know, I know that.
Go to eleven if they're like this on it.
I know that, but I'm saying if you start at seven-thirty, it's. I know that, but I'm saying if you start at seven thirty, it's gonna go later. If there's possibility to start at six, you may get more residents that are impacted to be able to come to the meeting, listen, blah, blah, blah. So I didn't know Bear is feeling since it's his meeting.
I, I start, annual town meeting must start at seven thirty. Like, there's nothing in the bylaw that says what time a special town meeting can take. We could just. This is at one o'clock in the afternoon if we wanted to do that. I.
Okay.
I wouldn't advocate for that cuz that would cause all kinds of messiness, but then we could set this starting time to whenever we wanted it to be.
Okay, Mondays are the traditional days, so that is why we were looking at Mondays. Time wise, I don't see an issue because there is no rule, as you said. Um, we obviously would have to confirm with, um, the schools or wherever we're gonna have it, that there's space available that day as well. So that's a factor too.
And.
It's a lot of coordination.
Correct, and because the school is technically closed, we now are responsible for paying a janitor cuz we have to be in the building.
Um, likely would be unless there's some, uh, summer people that happen to be there at night. I assume they're probably there during the day.
And. I know I've asked this question before, um, but I'm gonna ask it again. Ish on a cost of this special town meeting, ish. Ballpark.
So right now.
Anywhere between one and ten, ten and twenty, that's, I'm, I'm not looking for specifics, but I want people to know that there is a cost associated with this.
Do, does June have an idea? I guess.
For some reason, I was gonna say probably. But I'm not sure.
I was gonna say under five.
Under five thousand.
So I don't think two to three is that far off.
And, uh, uh, the additional cost for election.
We have to pay the election workers, we have to print it, we have to mail it.
Police fire.
Police detail, custodial fee for the gym.
Extra hours for Eloise.
Extra hours for games.
Hours.
Yeah, we have to have open voter registration. I.
Yeah.
When you factor it all, I mean, it might be a little bit higher than two, but it's, I would say under five.
Under, yeah, uh, under five, not ten.
Yep. All right. And have we thought about how communication will work so that people, all people in town are aware?
Well, they're all gonna get.
They're all gonna get it in the mail.
All right, okay.
And we can get it out.
I am, I'm quite sure there are several interested parties that would try very hard to make turnout happen at, at a special town meeting about the school budget.
But if you look at the, we're trying to keep it short. If you look at the draft warrant that I put together, which is very preliminary. Um, in your folder, it is four pages. Now, the town meeting warrant that just went out was.
Well, and to be fair.
Seven pages.
Four pages includes one, that's the cover page, and one which is the page which is on the outside, so.
Correct.
The amount of.
So it's two pages double sided.
Yeah.
Right, and so just, just for reference though, the warrants that we sent out that were, uh, twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two pages. That just for the printing and the mailing of those was forty-eight hundred dollars. So this is gonna be obviously a lot less when it's only two pages double sided.
We, we don't know that yet.
No.
Could be more.
My concern again, this has to be mailed within the next two weeks, even on the June seventeenth.
Yeah.
And if we don't have an agreed budget between select board, FinCom and school board. We, we will have the same mess at town meeting where on the floor you don't, you, you can't have a nuanced conversation about a seven hundred thousand dollar difference. You know, Fisher, there's seven hundred thousand numbers between those two that we could be potentially agreeing upon. Um.
Correct.
And, and so. I, I mean, I, I know by law we have to, but I'd also want us to research like, you know, a motion to adjourn this until, for another couple of weeks. Uh, if for some reason we don't have an agreed budget between the, the town and the school board.
Well, there's a, there's a dead, a couple of deadlines, so let me give you a little bit of a timeline. Um, and I, I think I talked about a little bit in the TA report, but there's a forty-five day, um, window in which we have to set a town meeting. Based on their vote of the seventh of May. So that would require us to hold a town meeting by June twentieth.
Right.
Um, and I believe that I, I'll check, but I would think we'd have to take a vote by that day.
I think the rules is we have to have a town meeting. I mean.
Okay.
Cuz we don't, I have to say, have to have an agreed budget. I mean, I, I.
Well, they have a budget.
Right.
There is, there is a budget.
Four million dollars, and so they already have.
There is a budget.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and I get that that's for BMS, that, uh, the Honto has a smaller discrepancy between the two. Um, uh. And so I, I'll be fine with this, but I want, I, I think we should be looking at our options because. I, I do not foresee a meeting that is worth having unless there's an agreement between the school board and FinCom and Select Board. On what the school budget should be.
Right.
And at the last, uh, school committee meeting, there was a request for a line item budget and also, so we have that. When is that going to be made available to the public? Because that's what was, I heard over and over again, show me, show me, show me.
Not just parents, but the rest of the public.
Everybody.
However.
I, I would.
That.
Put that onus on the school.
I was.
We have passed a four million dollar budget. The school board would like something different. I believe the school board should do the work to argue for those other numbers and why they should have it.
Right, I would say that we requested that information. I've disseminated what we have received to Select Board, FinCom and Capital. In terms of more broadly disseminating it, I, I would say that would be for the school committee to do.
Right, so we can direct the people, the public to contact the school board directly. With, to get that information.
I believe it's already posted on their website. I, I, I haven't seen other stuff, but that's, the stuff that we've received is not super secretive stuff. I think the schools have done a decent job of trying to get that information out there, and I'm assuming they're gonna continue to do that.
The problem is if it's on our website and they call us, I can't explain it because it's not my budget. So I don't wanna, and I don't wanna give anyone misinformation. I'm just gonna get angry people that I'm then referring to the schools because they're having to get bounced around. So that would be my concern.
Um.
We, we, are we still, I mean, we have asked several times for a level services budget. We have not gotten that either.
Um, not yet, but I believe they are working on that, um, and they're, uh, supposed to get that to us shortly.
Um, I wonder the format of the special time meeting, whether or not we really should break this down into more than one article. Uh, I don't see the need to revote on our, on lines four, uh, one oh five, one oh seven, or one oh eight. Because both what was, uh, requested and what we have passed is the same. I think it should be two warrant articles, one for BMS budget line one oh four and one for Tohoto operating budget one oh six.
So for those.
Others have already been voted on.
So for those in the audience, the numbers that Scott. Was referring to, I wanted to make sure it wasn't on the board. Um, the Berlin Memorial Capital Assessment, um. School committee requested one hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-two. FinCom recommended the same amount.
Which was passed to town meeting.
Which was passed to town meeting. Capital, Tohoto Capital Assessment, School Committee Request of thirty-eight thousand, two fifty-three. FinCom recommended and voted at town meeting and the Tohoto Debt Repayment. School Committee Request of four hundred and fifty-nine, nine thirty-five. FinCom re- uh, recommended same amount and passed at same meeting. So just so that you're not sitting there going, what have they made line one oh five?
For me, that allows town meeting, the special meeting to be focused on the issues at hand, which is the operating budget for Berlin Memorial School. The operating budget for Tohoto, the stuff that we've already agreed to, uh, it just, just doesn't have to be something that clutters up the meeting at all.
And I completely understand that point. Um, unfortunately. Our breakdown that we do internally here is informational. What matters is the bottom line number. And I have confirmed that with town council, um, and with DESI, with the Department of Secondary Education. The vote that needs to happen is a yes or a no on the bottom line number.
And so the, the town has no say over capital improvements in the school, so we could give them a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for capital. They could decide to spend it all tomorrow and operate.
That's correct.
And so what's the point of having the separate line items? If that carries no weight.
My preference is to have it broken down exactly like that. As informational.
Yep.
If we have to do a bottom line vote, that's fine, but I still wanna see it broken down. Because that's what we're used to seeing.
Right.
Well, we see it there cuz we believe that when we give the schools capital money, they spend it on capital.
I know.
It's not a horrible assumption to make, and, and to be fair, and, uh, is that. To date, I, everything, everything we've ever given the schools for capital has been spent on capital. So I'm not making any implication that it's never happened that way, but we are now in a weird environment. Where we've never been as a town, where there's this wide gap between the two of them, and I think it's important to make sure the money.
Some trust.
Right.
And for those in the audience, for tracking numbers, uh, the school committee requested amount is eight million, six hundred ninety-one, seven, eighteen. FinCom recommended, uh, seven million, nine hundred and fifty, four oh six, with a difference of seven hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars.
Um, and since town meeting, FinCom has not had a chance to meet to potentially come up with a different recommended number.
Right, they're meeting Wednesday.
And they're meeting Wednesday. The, uh, school board did meet and decided the number that was rejected, they're just sticking with, and aren't interested in negotiating.
Uh, they did take the four hundred. Thousands.
Which was already.
Which was already kicked out anyways.
Kicked out anyway.
I know.
On the operating side.
Anyway.
Uh, on the operating side, nothing has changed despite the rejection by the taxpayers.
Right, and the problem with that is that the operating side is what affects the taxpayers. The capital side comes from free cash. They're, they come from two different funding sources. So free cash doesn't raise taxes, operating does. So the seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollars that we're still off would have to come from raise and appropriate, which means raising taxes.
So on the four hundred thousand, um. I know that was pulled because there wasn't information. I saw a quote go by for two ninety. Um, at the school committee meeting a couple of Fridays ago, um, someone had mentioned it's over three hundred thousand. Has there been any other additional quotes that have come in? And if so, what are they?
So I shared additional, one additional quote. There was a two hundred ninety-seven thousand that came in.
Which is, I think, the one that we saw.
The schools aren't currently asking for this.
Correct, but I'm just, I'm just curious as to, I'm hearing, I'm hearing different numbers and I want to know where the numbers are coming from.
I don't think the numbers matter because it's not something that is asking us to do. No one is asking for money for AC. And so whether or not you have quotes.
Yes, but there was a comment at the school committee meeting that they're not asking for money. There's an assumption that because of the agreement. Berlin's going to be responsible for paying for it anyway.
We will be.
Right.
So that's why I'd like to know what the numbers are.
We, we will be when it passes a town meeting as a warrant article, just like the one forty-three, one thirty-two. Is the amount of money that Berlin is paying for capital improvements, the, the schools. The town does pay for the capital improvements via a warrant article at town meeting.
Right. So, so.
So I expect probably at December town meeting when we have one, there'll be one for ACs for the schools that will have the added, the added, added stuff on it.
All right, then we'll table that. I'll, I will pull back my question on that in the interest of time.
So if I can just add two quick things to this, um, so unfortunately, and I understand that things have been broken out. You know, here, and there has been an understanding, um, that that has been followed. And when things have changed on capital, the schools have reached out to us. And said we'd like to use it for something different. I've disseminated that to the three main groups, um, and, you know, we've, we've gone that way. So that's great, and I would hope and expect that we could continue to move forward, um, in that way. I don't have any reason to believe we would not. Um, but the, the problem is, and the reason that it is, it is that bottom line number. Is we don't have the ability to, by law, to line item a school committee budget.
But it can be there informationally.
It can be there informationally, just like what we do with capital.
Right.
We still vote on one bottom line number, but capital can be broken out if someone doesn't agree with it. That's the difference.
We also vote a section of budget. And if somebody wanted to make a motion and say, I wanna pull that one out, vote it separately, can we still do that?
Not with the schools.
Right.
And, and I think that's a change that, or not a change, I think that is, um. Perhaps the way that it should have been done previously.
Hmm, and we weren't totally regionalized.
Once it became, once, once we became regionalized. Yep, I think it just wasn't switched over fully at that time.
Right.
To a one bottom line number.
I think if you don't put those numbers in, at least for information. Or informational purposes.
Yep.
I think there's gonna be a lot of people who are upset about it.
Oh, I have no issue putting them in the description. It's just that the vote has to be a up or down on the bottom line number.
All right, should we open this up to public comment? So, uh.
General public comment?
Yes, for the folks in the audience, we, uh, decided as a board to delay. Uh, public comments until the end of the meeting, knowing that that was probably going to be the one that people were concerned about. So if you have a comment you would like to make, please raise your hand. I will address you, um.
I, I would believe that public comment I asked to be after seven is done, and we are currently in the seven and, not after seven oh. That when we're done seven, we can have general public comments.
So you wanna vote to open and close the town meeting and then do public comment?
That's fine. If that's what you want.
I, I think that we're on and right now, the date and time of special town meeting, and then you'll open and close the warrant for articles.
Okay, I didn't catch that beginning, but.
All right, that's fine. So. The date.
So motion to open and close the special town meeting warrant. Tonight.
Right, but I'm still trying the date and time. What time would you like to start the meeting? And I'll respond with Monday the seventeenth. As opposed to a Saturday.
Oh, you're still on N.
I, I don't think we've done a vote on N.
No, we have not.
Okay, correct.
I'm fine with the seventeenth. I know people have asked for Saturday meetings, but again, you have. Terran Day, I don't know. I don't know how that would work if you're gonna get a less, less amount from people. I don't know. So the seventeenth, I'm fine with for Monday.
What time do we wanna start?
Six.
Really?
Yeah.
What about you, Scott?
My ability to get there at six could be stretched, but.
Six thirty?
But there's o- other people will be the other stuff too. I mean, I'm sure somebody would wanna get it done earlier. I think six thirty gets at least someone a chance to get home and have some dinner, um, be- before getting there. I should maybe get two hundred. Hungry and angry.
No, I don't eat during lunch. Uh, uh, uh. All right, I'm fine with six thirty.
Okay.
So.
I would make a motion that we hold a special town meeting on, uh, Monday, June seventeenth at six thirty PM.
At BMS.
At BMS, hopefully we can get BMS, but I.
If not, we will get another location.
Well, I think we can only have it at, at Tohoto, I think is our only other option, isn't it?
Um, I, I don't know about Esteban.
No, I don't think South's common, you can, there, there's somewhere I remember reading, and I wish I had earmarked it, but there are only. Limited places where we can have a town meeting.
Does that apply to a special as well?
Yeah, because I know during COVID, we were.
I, I am quite sure the school will be able to help us figure out a space, I, that's.
All right.
I realize it might be strange, but it's not that strange.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor for a special town meeting at, of June seventeenth, which is a Monday, starting at six thirty, potentially at BMS. There a second?
Second.
All right, we've had lots of questions and discussions. We'll put this up for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, three oh. Okay, um.
You want a motion for the open and closing of the special town meeting?
Absolutely.
Are we allowed to do it that quickly?
I did confirm you can open and close the warrant in the same time, as long as it was posted on a, on the same day, rather. As long as it was posted on a notice that was posted forty-eight hours in advance of a meeting.
I'm glad you do all this great work ahead of time.
We, we did, yeah.
We tried.
So, um. Uh, and I think we've done it before actually too.
You have done it before. I wasn't familiar with it, so I did have to do the research. You didn't trust me. I'm, no, it's not that I didn't trust you, I just was unfamiliar.
At four years, I'm still the newbie, so.
So, yep, both, so I would make a motion to open and close the special town meeting warrant today.
And then it has, and it has that one article on it, correct?
Correct.
Um, I'm hoping before this gets mailed that, that obviously numbers get updated as numbers update. Um, and as much as I want this to go out as soon as humanly possible, uh, I would hold it to the last second if that helped us get to an agreement across the board where the. Uh.
Three entities.
Recommended by FinCom and recommended by the Berlin Boylston School District, uh, become a, a, a narrower gap between them. Or maybe even the same number, which would make for a five minute, uh, special town meeting.
Right, so if you'll in- indulge me, I'd like to just read the article for the public. Would that be okay for both online? So there's one article, um, Article One, the FY twenty twenty-five Regional School District Budget. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow and or transfer from available funds. Or otherwise provide all necessary sums of money to defray the town's expenses for general fund budget expenses. For the Regional School District Assessment for fiscal year. Oh, sorry, for the fiscal year, beginning on July one, twenty twenty-four, and ending on July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
June. June thirtieth.
Did I say July? I'm sorry, it says June. I'm making things up. Uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, or take any action relative there too. So that would be your article.
Mm-hmm, okay.
All right, ready? Public comment? All right, we will open the floor to public comment. If you have one, please raise your hand and you will be called to the front. Yes, and I'll need, so actually, that gentleman in the back, I hate pointing. Here, I'm gonna do an elbow. Um, if you could come to the front, please state your name.
Uh, Jason Paquette, uh, thirty-five Ball Hill Road.
Welcome, Jason.
Nice, nice to meet you, Jason. I saw you at the Regional School Committee.
Right.
Meeting, and you had quite good things to say.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, if I read fast, I can get in under three minutes. If you want me to slow down, is it okay if I go just a hair longer?
It's okay if you go a hair longer, but please know if there's any questions that you're asking the board to make, we may or may not be able to have any type of discussion or deliberation on them tonight, so.
More of a statement feedback.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so regarding the town meeting that we had, um, after the, the May sixth meeting, I attended the May seventh school committee meeting. Um, I gave two requests, two bits of feedback, transparency in the budget numbers, instead of just scare tactics on cuts, and collaboration with the finance committee as trusted representatives of the town members. I would also like to share some feedback with the select board and finance committee. Uh, given the six point two percent and eight point four percent increases requested for public safety and general government, um, choosing a two point five percent cap for schools seemed arbitrary. Claims to be limiting tax increases by capping education at two and a half should have been followed by similar caps and cuts for public safety and general government as well. If the goal was to send a message to the school committee, there were more constructive ways to do it than what we witnessed at the town meeting. Pending the transparency we've requested from the school committee, uh, we can still logically infer some key points. Uh, when teachers and instruction make up roughly half the budget, a level service budget is going to have a hard time fitting within a two and a half percent cap due to the teacher's contractual pay raises at three to four percent per year, plus step increases for years of experience and additional degrees. The more than doubling of the transportation rate eats a large portion of the two and a half percent cap, even before the teachers' contractual raises are considered. Even in the absence of proper visibility, it stands to reason, two point five percent is not going to be enough to maintain the school's current level of service. To check whether schools are living within their means, we can examine the expenditures per pupil data from the Massachusetts Department of Education, which suggests that the district is maybe not overspending. Statewide, Berlin Boyleson is below average. We spend seven point six percent less per student than the state average. Fifty eight percent of the, of the districts in the state spend more per student than Berlin Boyleson. We rank two hundred and thirty third for spend per student, yet Tohono is achieved thirty third in the US News rankings for the state. So we are getting very good bang for our buck. If we narrow the comparison only to other nearby similarly sized rural school districts, um, here in central Massachusetts, we are middle of the pack average in per student spend. Maynard and Harvard spent twenty four and twenty one percent more per student than Berlin Boyleson. Hudson spends eleven percent more. The Shab, the, the Shoba and Westboro spend four percent more. Berlin Boyleson is on par with Wes Boyleson, Air Shirley, Littleton, and several others. Many schools that spend less, like Quabin, Narangasset, are not ranked in the top one hundred, while Clinton, Marlborough, Gardner, Winchenden, and others are ranked in the bottom half. Personally, I would not view those as aspirational comparisons. If we narrow the comparison only to other nearby top quartile districts that are comparable in quality, we are below average in that cohort, ranked six out of eight, spending three percent less than the average of this peer group. Going forward, we have asked the school committee to be more collaborative with the finance committee and provide much higher levels of detail on the budgets. But considering other available data points, which suggests that two point five is an unreasonable limit. If we're willing to increase public safety and general government by six and eight percent, and since the district apparently has a, a history of average to below average expenses, then even without the desired transparency increases requested by the school district don't seem unreasonable.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? That's horrible for me to do. I apologize. I just pointed and went like this. Sorry, if you could state your name in case the folks don't know you.
Uh, Scott Schultz, thirty six Bray Road.
Nice to see you.
Um, my comment is probably a moot point at this point, but specific to the date for the actual vote. Uh, I was going to advocate, I mean, we have done these things before on Saturdays. And I was going to push for no doing it during the daytime on the, uh, Saturday, the fifteenth. And part of that reason is, I mean, a lot of the feedback you've heard on this stuff is, no abilities and people's ability to get there on weekday evenings. Uh, even though there was an effort to give people an easy chance to vote by doing it with the override, and that will have been something that will have been convenient for people. I think people need to be aware that that was something that was not, um, advocated by the schools and was voted down to take us to that approach that will have given everybody in town an easy chance to vote. So in the ability to produce every possible voter, it seemed to make sense that going to a Saturday during the day would provide the best ability based on a lot of the complaints about people not being able to get to, uh, the town meeting. So that was my comment is, I would be advocating, even though you vote differently now, but for Saturday, the, the fifteenth, I mean, there is a precedent for it, for zoning, uh, board meetings at the, or votes in the past. Um, when I think when I first moved to town, there was a major one on a Saturday, and you get some significant, uh, turnout. On those, so I'll just be advocating for more turnout. Instead of unfortunately, when we had town meeting, the, there was more of an emphasis of having a small pe- number of people to, uh, vote. So what we can do to get more people vote instead of having less is better.
Thank you, Scott.
There we are, hi.
Hi, Kyle.
Hi, Kyle.
Kyle Burns, nineteen Pollard Road.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for all of the discussion related to the budget in the town meeting. Just wanted to put one point on the calendar, um, and echo a little bit of what Scott just said, that our school district has to pink slip teachers as of June fifteenth. Uh, so beyond that June fifteenth date, uh, puts unneeded hardships and fear in our teachers. And so if we could do before the fifteenth or before, that would be better. And a second point of note is that school is still in session the thirteenth and the fourteenth. And so in terms of the cost of janitorial staff and, and the school, perhaps there's savings by moving it just a couple of days earlier. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Anyone else like to speak? State your name.
Heidi Patar, Derby Road. Um, first I have a question, um, in regards to Kyle's comment about the pink slips. I don't know if you'll be able to answer it. Is, is that a fact? Because there is a budget in place. The pink, the pink slip is under the assumption that there's no budget in place.
Who's had a question to defer to Kyle? I have, uh, we, I, we don't know.
We do have a budget, and I will say I have confirmed with Desi that there is a budget if we were to go to the, w- we have voted on a budget, but it was a rejection of the school's budget, which is why we have to have another town meeting. So if we don't have an, a vote that's on agreement, unfortunately, um, it would go to a district wide meeting next with Berlin and Boyleson, which likely couldn't happen prior to July one. So then we go to something called one twelve budgeting, which is based off of FY twenty four levels. So while the town meeting did pass a budget, it was essentially a rejection of the school committee's budget. So we don't actually have an agreed upon.
And, and they don't accept.
And the state doesn't accept that budget, unfortunately. I'm sorry, yes, this, correct. The school could have accepted that budget and come back to us and cut their budget to meet that amount, but they did not. They came back to us with a different amended amount. And that amended amount was just removing that HVAC amount, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so that was my, my main question. Um, unfortunately, my notes and my speech aren't as well prepared as Mr. Paquette's. Um, I'm kind of, you know, I take notes and write it down and speak as I go. Um, first of all, I am in total agreement that unless school committee, FinCom, and the board of the select board get together in agreement, it's not worth having the special town meeting. It's just, it's, it's totally circular. It's going to be the same battle, going circular. Um, not worth having the meeting if everybody doesn't get on board. And I, I think what's been totally removed from the conversation is everything is just so focused on dollars and numbers, that what's been totally removed is the, the person aspect of what that higher budget creates here in town. Um, I understand that we all want the best education for our children, and that the special ed budget is, we are obligated to educate these, these children, um, and it is, it is a higher expense. But to me, what that means is that we have to find cuts someplace else, places that we can cut without lea- without, you know, and still fulfilling the, the legalities that we have to fulfill. Um, you know, and I, I'm not going to go through, um, I think some of this, most of the stuff that I have is probably meant for the FinCom meeting. Um, but i- it's just, it's become so focused, like, on the school, the school, the school, the special, the special ed. Um, something that came to my mind was, um, as far as encompassing all students, the only thing that parents showed any concern with was, oh, art class, music class, sports are going to be cut. It's always been my impression that schools are there mainly for reading, writing, and arithmetic. There was no talk about what's being done for the non-special ed students to beef up the reading, writing, and arithmetic education of all the students. Everything just seems to be so focused on the special ed students, and I don't think that's fair. Um, and then I think what really needs to come to an agreement and be recognized is that generous emergency money that was given last year to the tune of three hundred eighty two thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars, which is much closer to four hundred thousand dollars than three hundred thousand dollars. Um, it was the understanding of, at least on the warrant and of the voters that I've spoken to, that that was a one-time funding. And somehow it, it was, I think the funds were mischi- misused, maybe not illegally misused, but I think it, in a sneaky manner, they were misused, and now they've been rolled into the permanent budget. And that is not fair to the taxpayers whatsoever. That's just really sneaky and, you know, trying, trying to figure out what your tax increase is going to be. Um, you know, we're getting, oh, because, you know, there's only this much of an increase in the school budget. It, it's just, it's just very confusing. I mean, I can say what my, my tax increase from fiscal year twenty three to twenty four was nine hundred and forty eight dollars. If I go by what I'm being told, if that almost four hundred thousand dollars stays in the budget, and then on top of what they're asking for that we're going to have to fund, my fiscal year twenty four to twenty five, my taxes are going to increase one thousand eight hundred ninety six dollars. Like I said at the, the original town meeting, I just don't know how people here in Berlin are expected to absorb these, these kind of financial hits. Cuts need to be made. We can't just keep saying yes, yes, yes to everything. The word no has to be added in there somewhere. We need to start taking an approach over what is absolutely necessary versus what is wanted. And I think, um, the, the school committee is i- is unwilling to accept any cuts, um, and just e- expecting us to, to just all absorb it. And, you know, just kind of, you know, swallow it with a spoonful of sugar. And it's really creating some financial distress, not only for myself and my household, but I know for many other people in the community that have been here for, for the long haul. There are many, many taxpayers in this town that have been here for decades, and we have been very supportive of the town, including the school budget. And, you know, I, I've seen since fiscal year nineteen ninety eight, I have seen an increase of a hundred and thirty three percent in my, in my tax bill. So people who have maybe only been in town for a handful of years have not seen that kind of increase yet. Hang around for a little while and see what the increases are, and see how long you're willing to absorb it. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Thank you. Anyone else? Alright. Do you want to entertain a, a different date, or are we sticking with the, our original vote?
I think that we stick with it.
I, I'm just stick with it for, for now. Um, I, I'm, I am really, really hoping that there is an agreed budget well before that meeting. That I think the school, I, I think the school could make judicial decisions that like, if they have to make a decision on the fifteenth of June, whether they have to set up big slips or not, if there's an agreement between the school board, FinCom, and this board on a budget, that that's the budget that's likely going to pass at the meeting, and they could make decisions based on that. Um, I don't know.
And there's.
I don't, I don't envy it, because it, it's, there, there is, I think, I said seven hundred thousand numbers between the two numbers, and I think all seven hundred thousand of them have problems with them. Uh, it is trying to find something that is, uh, the, 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 I don't know, something that works.
Well, there's a reason why that the process where we, you know, departments all meet with the FinCom and possibly the select board, is so that it does, we do have an agreed upon number. And then we don't have this big mess.
Right.
And, and, you know, have we been able to meet together? You know, in February, March, April. You know, maybe that would have been the case.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other comments on this?
If I could get clarification on these numbers, so, uh, not the digits, but the, so when we vote on a budget number, I don't want to read either of these two numbers, but the, the total number, so we're gonna, it's a total number package, the schools can spend it on they want. Does this also mean that if we vote on a number for Berlin Memorial School, that number goes to Berlin Memorial School, or does that number go to Boyleson? And they mix those numbers together? Because I believe that Berlin does support and has, sorry, that was from when we were going into the regionalization, that Berlin has to be more generous to their schools as a whole on a per pupil basis than, than Boyleson. Um, and I just want to make sure that if we're spending money for Berlin, it's going for Berlin.
And you can see, this is part of the trust thing.
Right.
Without a line item budget by school, it is challenging to see his, like a historic line item budget, which we asked for, like a five-year look back. Um, I can't say for sure where funds have gone. So I think the challenge for me has been when I'm trying to make financial recommendations, I like to see the, the, the history of it, right? And this is a little bit of a, a hybrid regional school, right? Where we each have our own elementary schools, but we have one middle high school. However, this is governed by chapter seventy one, still under mass general law. And after reviewing the regional agreement and speaking to Desi and speaking to town council, my understanding is that we are assessed based on the needs of each school. We are assessed a portion of the overall Tohono budget, but ultimately, line items budgeting cannot be done, which means month funds can be shifted between line items during the school year. So if there were, was excess funds at Berlin Memorial that year, they could be used somewhere else.
And we have no control over that, just so that people are aware. It's basically, here's your money. And then she can do whatever she wants with it.
That is my understanding. However, I will say that the schools have been very good about telling us where they're spending our money and what changes have been made. So we have had that trust and that understanding, and like I said, I, I would hope and expect that that would continue. But, you know, ca- can we sue them for not doing? No, I mean, y- you know, the, the, this is the reason they don't have to line item budget. And there are reasons under mass general law why they don't have to line item budget. Their circumstances change constantly as students come in and out of the district and have different needs. So that there's a reason under state law that they don't. I will say, however, I am used to, as one of the people who evaluate on a financial side, getting a budget book every year. And I have not seen one of those in my almost two years of being here.
There have never been one, but they have given us information previously. They have given us any of the numbers that we asked for.
I, I mean, the school is breaking up this information. They have to for their own internal budgeting purposes, so I'm not understanding why that can't be provided.
Right.
Because I know some of the problem is that, you know, we hear, I, uh, line items, like some special ed students have moved out and some have moved back, and we've asked for that number. And I'm sure I, we'll, the only time that I will speak for the board is to say, I don't want to know that it's Sally on insert name here street that is moving out, and Bobby on insert name street is moving in. But it's if you're saying some are moving in and some are moving out, which is bigger, you know, and, and unfortunately, we've never been able to get that information.
And, and there is a reason for protected information, and there are situations that you need to, but we're talking purely numbers.
That's it.
We don't want anything but.
That is correct. Ten go in, fourteen go out, twenty. That is correct. Ten go in, fourteen go out, twenty come in, thirty-five go out. That's all we've been asking for all along, and we've never been able to get.
In the last two years.
Correct. We've never been able to get that level of detail, and we have stated continually, we don't want HIPAA information. I don't want to know. At all. I just want to know when you say some, is some three? Or some thirty-five?
Amounts even.
Can't get it. And I think that speaks to some of the transparency that people are looking for.
We have had that in the past.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. We, we, we did.
Yes, we, we have had.
Transportation.
In fact, even, even last year during the budget process. The budget that was, when they began to present this, you know, in. Uh, or FY twenty-four, when we were meeting in early, um, twenty-three. The budget broke down more about the num- individual numbers of, uh, students by the schools. The number of students in, for special education, particularly also our district special education. Uh, one other item they also had there that also is no longer shown in their budget presentation. Was individual breakdown of the spending per student broken down by the three schools. Of course, if you take the entire school district and look at the individual spending per student. That gives a much different picture than if you broke it down by just BMS, just Boyle's Elementary School and just Tejano. In fact, uh, you know, the numbers plummet significantly when. Boyle's Elementary School is included in there. Not only is their spending per student very low. It also, they represent two-thirds. I mean, their population is much bigger, so it also is, uh. Force our numbers and BMS is very high. And what's interesting is this year's, as the new budget came out, those pages are there. So suddenly it's showing, because I'm sure that with the big jump in the. BMS numbers, the student population hasn't jumped to that number. The, the spending per student BMS is very, very generous. Uh, if you compare that to other schools in the area, but if you, again, incorporate that all into, you know, the entire district. Like say BS particularly, um, makes that go down significantly. Those are the type of things that were there, they were always there before, they were, they were there last year. And now this year, those individual things just disappeared from the pages. And when we have asked, I mean, when, when the school committees came to our meeting in December. When we, as soon as we start asking for, again, just numbers, the immediate thing we get back is, and from the school committee is. Privacy concerns. It's like, we're not, we don't care about people. I mean, the names and stuff like that, we just want the numbers. So, right, yes, exactly. And that's just what we really want, and that's where it's gone in chaos. And I, to me, I mean, not speaking for the finance committee, I mean. The biggest reason I think we were in, we're in this mess is. There really seem to be the view that they didn't have to negotiate with us or discuss this. And they could just push it through a town meeting, which is also why they emphasize voting, against giving the people a paper ballot vote. That we would have this, we could have this very simply done. We wouldn't be setting new dates. We'd have a time when people could conveniently vote. But that's not the approach that was taken. So I don't know how to completely amend that. I think, um, you know, we are having conversations with Carol. She is providing us more. Uh, detailed information and hopefully we will get to that place.
One, one of the things that one resident brought to my attention was the fact that we. No longer have information like we used to in the annual town report from the schools. There's, you know, it used to be pages and pages of, uh, numbers and even teacher salaries. Which, you know, that kind of thing, and now there's nothing in there anymore. It's not, I mean, it's not disseminated to households by mail anymore. But it should still have the information in it. You can pick up those annual town reports several different places.
Yes, there, the, even, even that was never stuff we went worried about the individual, because who. We didn't care about the individual salaries or that type of stuff, but it was useful information. Right, they had that information and we had that breakdown and. Always the first budget we would always receive, and we know it was very preliminary, would be, what's the level services? What's, do they project right now is the minimum amount of money that would be needed to continue the services moving forward? Unfortunately, this was also complicated this year with the fact that last year when we voted a town meeting for the FY twenty-four budget. Nobody was under the impression that they were adding positions on a regular role, you know, going forward. With, uh, the additional money that we were hoping, again, I think one thing to clarify, we were. We did not know for certain that was going to be one-time funds. We were hoping in a few things. One is in our conversations with the school, um, with Carol and. Um, Nancy was that when it comes down to the, our district special education spending, I mean, that is very fluid. And it was a very unique situation for a school that's as small as BMS to have four students coming in that potentially had exposure. They also knew because it's so fluid in these type of situations, there's a good chance, one, that they would not be in the district still. But if they were also in the district, well, the other things we've known is the reimbursement from the state. Unfortunately, it comes in the following year. So we, again, were putting up the money upfront that if they had stayed and we would still have been under this obligation. The reimbursement, again, it's not a hundred percent reimbursement, but a significant reimbursement still comes from the state. That would have been able to offset that number in the next fiscal year. What's unclear to me now is now that they, you know, have created the special education, um, individual teachers and this stuff. Do we get any circuit breaker money? Is there, or is this now, we've taken out one hundred percent responsibility? And the state no longer reimburses us any percentage? So that's one thing I want to understand is, is there expectation that there is some circuit breaker money coming in the next fiscal year? Because of the additional positions that were added for special education? And that's not clear to me whatsoever, because I, you know, we had a brief conversation with Lynn Ryan, who's been involved with Aspen for years. And it's not clear cut that just because you take on the positions of, um, for special education. That you, the reimbursement you would get from going out of district when you're small. Could be that you are spending more money, not actually saving money. You have the potential to save money. It seems like the volume is there. But it's not clear to me, they want to say they're saving money. I want to see the numbers demonstrating that you are saving money. And that's not, again, again, I think that's still, there's numbers are Carol's getting together on this type of stuff. But we need to see that. Just don't tell me you're saving. Don't tell me I'm wrong. Explain to me how I'm wrong. Explain to me how we're saving money. Prove it to me. That's all I want.
And I guess that's part of my issues too, as I sit here and I look at the line item budget and I see. Uh, in, in the glory of having committees come to FinCom, is that I would come to you and say, Scott, FinCom, I need a person. And you'd say, that's great. Why? Well, I don't know. And then you'd send me away and I'd have to come back the following week with ten reasons why. But I see items like admin aid. That gives me a why. I see occupational physical therapist salary. Does that mean that anyone was added? Because if I look at that, it might be a salary, it might be two salaries. New paraprofessional salaries. Again, new salaries, new people. Um, I look at expenses that just say price increase. We do the same with all our departments. Fred or anybody comes back and says, I have a price increase of blah, 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 and they come back with line item detail. On what that means, and yes, it's not going to be exact, but this. Is nothing. This is not the transparency specific information. That I as a voter, not as a select board member, I as a voter want to determine which way I'm popping the button in that couple Mondays from now.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I mean, the particular piece is how big of a increase this is. And, uh, you know, we know that the BMS number that they moved down. Added, at, at least showing no additional items added over what they presently have in terms of personnel. But we also know that, you know, from the initial num- things that they were giving us and also what, you know, we've seen these many things and also. That's also deceptive, I think, is the terminology they've used as they started from their December budget. They would refer to their cuts. Well, the cuts were reducing their wish list additions.
Right.
When most people think cuts is you had something and you're removing it. No, you, you've added it, uh, that's not a cut. It's like you've, you know, there needs to be some better terminology and also, I think, perception, you know, understanding. Because I think when people read that too, that they think they've already made all these cuts during this process, but. You want three people and you've now reduced it to only one person, that's not, uh, a cut. I mean, you're reducing your, your want to only one instead of three. So there's just certain things like this that need to be also cleared up to make it, and I think hopefully they're listening to say. You know, these are things that will be more transparent to the public and also at the main, same time. To be clear to the public and not give them different ideas.
I mean, we require anything over ten thousand dollars to get three bids, correct? If something is going to cost more than ten thousand dollars for the.
Three quotes, and then over fifty, it has to go out to bid.
So then I look at something that has an over eighty thousand dollar increase that just says price increase, my immediate thought goes, show me the bids. Who did you talk to? Or is it just, Chris, Chris has always done this for me, so Chris, what's your new number? Ten, okay, ten. Where if I went to Scott, he'd say, seven. Don't, again, missing information, don't have that. This is just numbers on a paper.
Of course, legally, we have no right to that.
I understand that. Legally, we have no right, but I think that there is an ownership and a responsibility by the school board to step up. And give the information that people need to make a sound vote on this in two ways. Vote yes, vote no, that is your privacy. I will never ever ask for it.
You're asking for those votes to pay.
Right.
So you need to give them information.
Right, and even Desi echoed that, um. They said this, you know, obviously the, the school committee can ask for whatever they want. They could ask for a forty percent increase. But they have to be able to explain it, and that's really where my challenge came in. In my role is making recommendations that are fiscally responsible. If I don't understand why. Those, in, those requests are being made and I don't have the backup documentation and the justification. Which comes from attending a meeting, providing documentation, having a discussion. Um, I know the gentleman who spoke earlier mentioned the six and eight percent increase in public safety and general government. He's absolutely right. Those were contractually obligated increases or documented needs that we had. So for example, there, there are some ads, we did have a few things that were above level. And I don't believe we were opposed to considering above level services items for the schools. The problem is there was no conversation, there was no discussion, there was no backup documentation. I don't. I think it would have been fiscally irresponsible of me to recommend going above a two and a half percent increase.
Well, and to be fair, two and a half percent was arbitrary. It was arbitrary because we didn't have a budget number.
Correct. That's not where I was thinking initially.
We did not get budget numbers until days before it had to be in the mail to the, the taxpayer. But, you know, and, and then.
We did have some budget numbers. Exactly. You can't say we had no budget numbers. That, yeah, to be clear, I mean, that's, that's where we're getting into some exaggerations on this. I mean, they did come to, we. No, they did come to us in December. Unfortunately, they did not lay out a, you know, a level services budget. They produced. A variety of here's all the positions you want to add, and fortunately, you also weren't broken down by, you know, what percentages that we specific to. BMS and Tejano in, no, but the big thing is.
When did FinCom get the four point five million dollar budget that is there in school board's recommendation?
Well, we got the school, well, the official school, it needs vote. Recommendation, I think, came to us at like five o'clock and the last day of our, uh, of our last, uh, meeting that we had before we had to have.
And, and if we wanted to be accommodating to that budget and adjust other town budgets to accommodate it, how much time do you have to make cuts around the rest of town? When the schools represent sixty percent or forty-six percent of our town budget?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the whole point of having the conversation in February. And next, I mean, even when we met in December, we had agreed upon them, you know, that's where we had the discussion, them coming back. And that was agreed upon date was the first Wednesday in February. It wasn't something we just threw out there at them. That was agreed upon at that time. And then when we get, got, started getting close to that, we got a, you know. Email from the, the board, or excuse me, the chair of the, um, school committee saying that we don't have, we'll have anything together for any of that. And then said it'd be the last Wednesday of February. Then we got the last Wednesday of February. Well, we can't do this when we had some other issue of. Uh, things not being put into notice or that, so that'll be the next week, you know, first week of March. So it just kept. Rolling out again, this case, we had no idea what the true numbers were, and it was also. We did show up, you know, to the February, February, last week of February, uh, meeting for the school. Committee when they discussed the budget, in their, they were way beyond even anything that Boyle's thing could handle. I mean, the numbers were huge and that's where, you know, Boyle's thing came out for the first time saying, you have five hundred thousand dollars, figure out how to work from there. And the response was that they're like, uh, they have to figure out over eight hundred thousand dollars in cuts, just on the Boyle's side of things. And of course, obviously Boyle's is a big part of Tejano, so it leaves us really having no clue. About where the Tejano numbers are moving to. So it's, yeah, I mean, we, without that. Operation and insight and also trying to come to a number sooner. I mean, it seemed to be, uh, you know, we indicated what the revenue could be. And there, there seemed to be more of a viewpoint of, doesn't matter what the revenue can be, we can just. Uh, get whatever we want on the, uh, numbers, it's like.
FinCom has formally invited the school board to attend the Wednesday meeting?
Not, not yet. I have not. Um, we just set the meeting last week, part of it, waiting to see what the numbers were. Uh, so we received a information, again, I can, I think I can figure it out. It looks like there's information to figure out that we, for a level services, um, budget at, um, I'm not sure. BM, I can't, can't quite figure it out. It was like for that letter that was sent out, I think that came on, uh, Friday. So the question is, is it worth it to have them actually show up for this meeting? We've got a lot of other questions. Just to figure out what, because we don't have all the data, we don't have the, the next one.
Be at least one, if not multiple meetings that include FinCom and the school board between now and June.
Yes, I would expect that.
Discuss it among themselves first and then invite.
Yeah, well, I expect that we will have a meeting.
Vote your own, but like you did last time, without any other in order, without reaching out to anyone else.
Well, we, we're not going to vote on something at this meeting. I, it's almost certain that we're going to have to have a meeting the following Wednesday. Uh, I mean, I have no expectation this is going to be a one-time thing. It's, you know, typically we think we're done, uh, mostly this time of year. So there's clearly going to be additional meetings, uh, going forward here. So, but I was good, hoping to, you know, have the numbers.
The only ones at the meeting.
Yeah, well, and the other thing too is, I mean, these are, no, it's committee things, right? I mean, it's not me just making the decision, saying myself, asking the questions here, coming in, we do need this as a committee. So it's not me making this decision. There's four members that combined, and that's why we have to have that discussion also. And likewise with the, the school committee, I understand that they have to have those, uh, discussions, but. You know, we have the communication, um, with the administration, with Carol, Carol's, and we know they had their, uh. Person that's in the contractor that's working on details, understanding the details here, and we aren't getting that information directly again. So I, you know, I have a bunch of questions lined up on that myself.
But the, I think the point overall is, it is not right to push us. To schedule a premature town meeting, as everybody has been saying, without the information. I mean, if initially at the school committee meeting we attended a few weeks ago, they wanted a meeting by the end of March, I, I'm sorry, by the end of May. Um, but we didn't even get our preliminary information until Friday. So I, you know, you gotta work with us a little bit.
Right, I mean, and what concerns me is, you know, the timeline where the letter came in on a Wednesday and it was due on a Friday.
Yeah.
Even by some miracle, if you had gone and wiped out all these supplemental budget requests. That would only have, it would have been two hundred thousand, it would have been one-third of what the school was asking for. So again, it's due we to the detriment of all the other towns, of all the other departments and committees. That have done their job, and yes, there may have been increases, but there were specific circumstances. And I know I am fiscally conservative and tighter than a drum and love saying no. Uh, to, to people that come back and say, can I have, and I usually say no until you can prove me wrong. That we would have had to have stripped everything out of the town's ability to operate. In order to not even meet what the school committee was asking for.
Right.
And that bothers me.
And we thought last year was, would be, was an exception, apparently not.
And hindsight, last year set up this, because the four point five million the school has offered is actually a reduction in total, like, I, again, BMS. Because that's where it focuses, is, is still less than they spent last year in the schools when you add the extra money that was added in. And, and so this is where we sort of get a little bit of talking past each other, is that, uh, what looks like is an increase is also a significant cut. And, and trying to figure out like how you get around some of that things, and I, I don't know where, I mean, it is not an envious position to, 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 to be in. You know, I've I've spent a bunch of time over the last week or just crunching my own little numbers. Uh out there and and I can come up with numbers that show that uh the the schools have not been funded as great as we might want to fund it. And I can come up with numbers that show that we have been outrageously generous to the schools, depending on how you want to slice them. Uh it is that's that's sometimes the interesting thing about numbers is is the way you adjust it can uh. It comes out there, but at the end of the day is how do we get it so that Berlin Memorial School still is a decent school? It's still a high-ranking school. This school, uh school and our children uh in town are able to go to and succeed at. While also not running people out of their homes who need to live in them. You know, who've lived here a long time. The taxes go up. I I happen to have a decent job. My partner has a decent job. You know, this increase wouldn't, will not make a difference in me running out of my house or not, but it will some neighbors and friends and 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 we have to figure out a way to do that. And and I wish there was a a way to, you can say that this is tough. There are two good values here who are in 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 competition to each other. And I'd like to hear more from folks to on either side of this to say, I get the schools need to have some good money. I get that we shouldn't be running people out of their homes. Um and then how do we find the number that that both allows a good school and doesn't run people out of their homes?
Sure, it can be done. I mean, yeah, people want to support the kids. Absolutely, absolutely. I grew up, went through the school system. I think I turned out all right. You know, absolutely. But you know what? To me personally, the fear mongering needs to stop. It needs to stop because that only. What we have right now is a divide in the town and it's ugly. You can't go anywhere without being. Got a sec?
Yep.
Uh. Um. But you know, so. Stop with, stop with the.
We 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 look forward to more information.
Good luck, Scott.
Godspeed. And uh your your meeting is on my calendar too.
All right, um our last item is, oh, yes.
Karen Brown, one eight three River Road West. It's nice being retired. But and then these are, these are conversations that are had in corporate bed uh boardrooms all the time. And um it just struck me while this is happening. I don't know if someone is here from the school committee or not, but. Like Scott says, it's not going to affect him. Like Heidi says, it is going to affect her. They're both members of the community. We do have a a community that we're very proud of and a. And a group of people that live here that are all wonderful and they all should be treated, you know, equally. But is there any way that there can be a recommendation made to the school committee to do some fundraising? A lot of people are in corporate environments and their corporation will match. Public funds. So if you have a large number, there could be some consideration given to the school committee and townspeople. To help raise money. A lot of towns do races, they raise money uh through through various different ways. And it just seems that with seven hundred thousand, it is a really big nut to swallow. At the same time. It's something that we want to invest in because our children deserve it and our town deserves it. But fundraising would be one avenue. I would suggest that maybe when the committees are all talking, they should think about.
Feel free to reach out to them. Thank you. I appreciate it. All right, any other uh public comments for I close it down and we move on? All right, uh we're on our last item of boards, questions and liaison updates. Scott?
Um I have just a couple of questions. I don't actually have liaison as much that uh. Um the, we just had the fiscal year twenty-three sort of audit presented to us. Um if there was a way I can, it it's a way to get some information on which line items produced a lot of that free cash. We had a lot of. More than above average free cash. And whether or not some of those line items, I I ask whether or not some of those line items might be available for. Re- reduction at a special town meeting to help cover some increases to the schools. Uh uh we have some healthy balances in free cash right now. And so a year where we might not throw off as much. Might not be as detrimental. Um uh and then. Uh my other one can just be done as a, you know, I will.
Is this something that's going to take a lot of time, Kristen? Just curious.
I think it would fall more to. June is able to.
I'd work with June. It would take some time.
Okay.
Is this something that Peg and I both want to? I mean, I mean, you know.
I want to help. Oh, I truly, truly do my.
Do you want to give?
No, no, and I and I'm getting there. And you know, my son is special needs. God love him. I E P. Thankful for the school system that he went through, so he he is the man he is today. But as much as I want to help. In good faith, I can't because there was no good help and no good faith coming our way. If there had been negotiation, I would be opening up every page and going through every file in June's draw. To try and find money, but I'm sorry and it may sound petty. But that is how I feel. So no, I am not in favor of June or Kristen or Mr. Auditor Guy. Finding any.
Not not right now.
No.
No.
Nope.
That would be my thing, just not right now. Let's solve this problem that we have right now.
The one thing that might help is a a lot of the the reserves quote unquote that were generated happened during COVID when there was limited spending. So they, that it accumulated and we've been careful not to spend, but.
Well, I've, my request has been misconstrued.
Oh.
In fiscal year twenty-three, we had a budget and we had how much was spent on that line item. I would like those two numbers, so the difference between them is what got thrown off is free cash. If I could get those numbers, I will do all the calculations myself. And so if I could get a fiscal year twenty-three, budget to actual, I will do the rest myself.
It's a good thing you explained it.
Well, I thought it was simpler thing. I, well, worded, worded differently.
Okay.
Any?
Um yes, I I suggested earlier that we email um the Sennys about. The tearing down the old liquor store. One of the other questions that Coffee Talk was about the canoe launch. Can you include that in the email?
Um, isn't that more concom?
That um.
I don't.
Is that on their property?
It's Concom property.
Right.
Yes, but they were going to do it. They, the Sennys were going to do the, weren't they?
I have an update on that. No, Oars is actually working on doing canoe um paddling in town. So they actually asked me to connect them with recreation on um paddling around town. So I don't know if it's specifically from that location, but they are down in that area. So.
All I ju- all I wanted to know is 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 there one?
Oh, oh, if there's a canoe launch, okay.
There one, because they were the ones who had talked about it originally.
Okay, got it.
And you know, when somebody asks, we'll have an answer. That's all I have.
I got nothing. Mark this, mark this meeting down. I have set enough. Mark this meeting down. Hurry up, somebody make a motion to close it before I think of something.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh all in favor?
Favor.
Hi, I'm done. Thank you.